Mr. Delgado, lead us in the pledge, please. Please rise, take your hat off, put your hand on your car.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Sheevy, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jordan, Kachel.
Here. This time, we'll go to public comment. Andrew Dis.
Is there an overhead? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Andrew Dis and I'm a member of the Reno City Charter Committee. My interest in today's meeting was piqued after reading one of Angeline Damon's stories yesterday about the contract with Fisher &amp; Phillips. So I began reviewing the staff report that was provided by the city, along with NRS and along with our own city charter. And the decision you make today on items J-1 and J-4, they really hinge on interpretations of NRS 41.0344, which I have right here. I have now read over this section probably a dozen times, and nowhere does it mention the number of votes needed for approval to hire outside counsel. If you look in the staff report here, right here, that says, "You guys can pass this with a majority vote." However, when you read NRS, nowhere does it say "majority vote," anywhere. It seems like staff just kind of put that in, and I'm not sure where they got that from. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys weren't making the wrong decision on this because it could create a conflict with the existing language that's in our current charter. As you all know, the current charter specifies that in order to hire an outside counsel, it takes a six-sevenths vote. And in the absence of the specific number of votes needed in NRS, I believe the courts would look to the charter to clarify that, and it's explicit in the charter for the six-sevenths requirement. So I realize that hiring outside counsel is difficult, and it's purposely designed to be difficult because it should only be used in extraordinary circumstances and when there is a conflict of interest. So if the city council can't come to a six-sevenths agreement on whether to retain outside counsel, then that decision should be respected, and we shouldn't be trying to do an end around that supermajority requirement. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention today. And there's one other thing that I think needs to be pointed out, is also a typo on page 310, the same page of your staff report, when it's talking about NRS 41.0334, and then it cites NRS 41.0344. It's an easy mistake to make, but I think they got their NRS citations mixed up here. So I didn't want you guys to go looking in a different section that doesn't apply to here. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I've been a voter for five decades in the city of Reno. I am in Ward 1, and I'm a business owner. In my line of occupation, I'm a fly fishing guide, a master guide for Nevada, and I found the opportunity to judge, to guide some very influential people. One of them was Antonin Scalia, the longest sitting Supreme Court Justice, and also the Honorable Larry Hicks and Honorable George McGivern. I spent time with their residents, and they're friends of mine. I get a lot of clients from the United States, some congressmen, senators, and also from around the world. And I take them to the Truckee River. And we have an extreme problem on the Truckee River with alcohol abuse and litter. We have a Reno municipal codes that, for business activity, it's illegal. I'd like to see something done about it. I was here two years ago, and I presented a lot of photographs to the city council. And we had other issues with our economics and our budgets, and it seemed like it was overlooked. But right now, we are the driest state in the Union. We only have one natural resource, and that's our Truckee River. And right now, it's really a pigsty. It's embarrassing. Not only is it embarrassing, but there are safety issues with broken glass. And we have the statutes there, in the statutes, Section 8, 1.2003, Section 1008. You can go through those, and you can see the laws on the books. So I'm not asking for any new legislation. I'm asking that we control this and to take matters with the law enforcement. I've cleaned the river personally since 1980 with the Truckee River Fly Fishers. That was our first, we were founded in '79. Our first project was to clean the river. Every year, we get together, we clean the river so they can trash it again. That's not the answer. The answer is to have a patrolman at Mayberry Park, De Roscar Park, down the corridor at Ivinsack, and be there when they enter the river and say, "You can't have this cooler." Because what happens, they start at Mayberry, by the time they get to Booth Street Bridge, the styrofoam cooler, all of the contents are in the river. The air mattress is not a raft, but it is not designed for the rugged Truckee River. It's either left in the river or pitched up in the bank. Right now, at Ivinsack Park, there's a sandal tree in our river. Okay? I've got photographs of it. It needs to be removed. It's an eyesore, and it's not fun to have a shoe tree or a sandal tree on the river. Again, we are limited to natural resources. We need to, it's our responsibility to keep it clean. I voted for the water parks. They are designed for rafters with helmets, with life vests, with a means to control their vessel, not someone going down the tube, in an inner tube, pitching beer bottles. Okay? So again, thank you very much, and I'll be voting again at the general election. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I just, I do want to point out, because it is timely, I was just informed that there's a grant award that the city is exploring through the Truckee River Fund. It's funded through a set aside of all of our water user rates. It's due August 7th, and it would provide an opportunity for us to have, restore somewhat of our ranger patrol position. And then I've had dialogue with the city manager about that grant application. And we have also had conversations with the, our police department in what role the river plays in their patrol operations, too. So there's a few things we're working on right now, and I really hope this grant will be an opportunity for us because you mentioned our financial situation, and we're making hard choices.
Never mind, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Barthlett.
Mayor, council members, and Mr. Klinger. For the record, Dick Barthlett, president of the Regional Alliance for Downtown. First of all, I want to congratulate anybody and everybody that was involved with the King's End transaction. We're keeping our fingers crossed. RAD had nothing to do with that, but we sure are encouraged to see something happen there. Life and Culture Committee, how about those murals? Have you been down to see them? Isn't that nice? And I want to thank everybody that was involved. Circus Circus for taking the risk, Art Town, the RAD, the Life and Culture Committee, the Mural Subcommittee, the Artists, the Artist Selection Committee, and lots of other people for supporting that. So it's supposed to become an annual event, and we hope it just continues to grow. Safe and Clean Committee, I want to thank Maggie Telander, who's a resident of the Montage, and Jackie Logie, who also is a resident, and then Roberta Ross and our Safe and Clean Committee. I learned recently that the Parks and Rec Department has accepted the Montage's offer to install and maintain a dog waste station on the Retract property near the Montage. And to quote an email from Alex Woodley, "This is awesome news. I wish all of our citizens were as active as you guys." So we're really glad to see that happen. And finally, Economic Influence, we're actively working still on that infographic for the downtown districts, and hopefully we'll have something ready to go soon. That's the report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here on Item L-8, and I can't stay till the end of the meeting, so I thought I would make a few points at this moment on that. And Item L-8 was brought up by Councilwoman Breckus, and it's about eliminating the vague and arbitrary provisions that allow the administrator authority to approve nonconformities, to come into closer conformity to current regulations, and confirming that it is the city council who has the authority to allow nonconformities to change. The reason why I'm here on behalf of scenic Nevada, and the reason why I'm here is because I think this is a great step forward. We think it's confusing to Reno citizens who know or sense that there's some nonconforming business in their neighborhood. And if it's allowed to change by permit through the staff only, and it never comes to a public hearing, there's never any vetting by the neighbors of what's about to change, then I think that's hard on the citizens. So they don't get a chance to participate when staff handles that. So this idea that maybe this should be brought to the city council's attention first, let the neighborhood know there's going to be a change to a nonconforming use, would, I think it would help the neighbors. After all, that's what zoning's all about. It's, you know, putting conforming uses together in certain neighborhoods, and everybody gets along better and things work out a lot better. I speak to this from experience because scenic Nevada opposed a change to a nonconforming sign for a nonconforming business, and you're all familiar with the Wild Orchid issue that came up. Believe it or not, so many, so many years later, scenic Nevada still gets calls from people in town that say, "How, how could that have happened?" I know they're talking about content, but scenic Nevada came here on this issue, allowing a nonconforming use to increase or enhance itself so that it becomes, the nonconforming business is now enhanced because the sign's enhanced. And that's not the idea behind labeling something nonconforming. Nonconforming means it doesn't, it's allowed to exist, it's grandfathered in, but it's not allowed to change or become enhanced. That's my understanding of what the code used to look like. So this would be a great opportunity if you could bring this back, you could look at these issues that are going to come up among neighbors. The other thing is I, is it's about, that was in Midtown that that happened. And again, in Midtown, we've got a lot of, you know, it's a mixed-use corridor. Scenic Nevada is so in favor of that idea. We came here in 2006 supporting it. We still support the idea. So if you have nonconforming businesses in Midtown that want to do something that's not part of the mixed-use, you know, format, then I think you all should be looking at that rather than just let it go in, you know, through a permit process with the city staff. And that's all that we wanted to say, that we do support mixed use. We do support this idea that nonconforming uses should be restricted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city managers. My name is Mark Marquel, and I'm a country Reno resident. I just, my mission in life is to educate the community and students about getting in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer a traumatic brain injury and get off track. It's very important to me to educate, to let people know what happened to me so it doesn't happen to them. I suffer a traumatic brain injury, and I had a car crash and rode eight times. I was not wearing my seatbelt, and it wasn't mandatory back then, and I was ejected, and the car landed on my head. I was in a coma for a month and in the hospital, five and a half months more. Once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk, walk, and eat all over again due to my traumatic brain injury. I can't do everyday tasks. My life has completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Through much pad, people against drunk driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. I've lost my wife, not because of drunk driving, but because I used to be a drug addict, and she, I, this, this, I, I've gone, people don't go through what I've gone through. I've gone through a lot. I've lost a lot, and it's just too much. People, please don't get in the car with a drunk driver. Parents, don't drive drunk with their kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents and teachers. They just want to make good sense of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. It's, it's drugged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon, folks. Jeff Church, resident of the city of Reno, own a business here. I don't want to drone on about Reno's financial problems, but I wanted to share an analogy that I heard down at the taxation board that I thought was very appropriate. Yesterday, you dealt with the issue of getting the airplane off the runway, the budget. Once you clear that runway, as was said yesterday, that's not sustainable. There are trees at the end of the runway you're going to run into, and if you're lucky enough to clear those trees, come 2016, there's a mountain out there waiting to clear. So I just want you to keep the long vision of our financial difficulty in mind. I've stood here many times, and I've said that Reno Police and Fire are the highest paid in the nation. Nobody has ever disputed that. You've had the firemen up here and had the opportunity to ask them to dispute it, and they don't. But I did give you a handout today that gives you your facts and figures, so the next time somebody comes up and whines about making $22 an hour, you'll be armed with a little education on that. Yesterday also, our good police chief, Steve Pitt, spoke about the police academy coming down the road. I do teach nationwide on police hiring and training and recruiting, so I'm considered a national expert in that area. And I want to strongly suggest that you not do a police academy. There are thousands and thousands of applicants out there who are fully post-qualified, certified, academy-trained police officers, deputy sheriffs willing to come to Reno, as we are the highest paid. This nice officer over here is a perfect example. Came from us from another agency, and a great cop. So we don't have to spend a lot of money on a police academy. We have thousands of laterals out there willing to join us. And as was just mentioned a little bit ago, there are other alternatives as well, including reserves and rangers. I did a little quick math, and I could not believe what I came up with. If we don't do a police academy and we hire laterals, our savings are in excess of $1 million, and that would really help the police budget. And again, we need to do good recruiting. I know a good recruiter. The next issue I want to bring up real quickly is Item L-5, the Veteran Committee and the Veteran Commission. If you do decide to approve that and go ahead with that, I'd like to be considered for that committee. I'm a VFW life member. I'm an Air Force Association life member. I'm a, much like my friend Sam here, I'm a lieutenant colonel, retired. He was from the Guard. I was from the Air Force Reserve. Also want to mention that previously you had supported a fire expo or fire forum for information for the citizens. Please don't let that fall by the wayside. Looking forward to hearing more about that and having all the different parties attend. Also in the news today was the fact that we apparently have, certain members have reached a tentative agreement on an alcohol policy with the fire department. Please don't rush into any conclusions that that's a done deal. The policy, as I've read it, is gut-wrenchingly terrible and needs to be reviewed by everybody before we approve anything. You know, it's a good step in the right direction. I applaud those people that, Chevy, that did that, but we do need to take a very close look and not just assume that that's the final version. And once, and finally, I do want to support, if it's legal, the hiring of the outside counsel, and especially the expert labor representative who would be a non-attorney spokesman, so to speak, a non-attorney expert. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Encyclopedia of Reno Government, that's me, Sam. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, and I've been coming to these meetings for 20 years, and I have saved the city of Reno $247 million. Nobody ever reports that except Sam. Two hundred, and I could have saved another $100 million except for one of my failures, two failures in my career. The failure to be able to talk these people and the other people into buying this boondoggle here, this albatross, so that they can eat their caviar up there on the 15th floor. Sam Dene, that's me. I have more credentials, more credibility, spunk, gumption, moxie, natural charisma, and humbleness than all of these other bureaucrats added together. Sam Dene, standing right here, is living proof that the vote-stealing traders in this community, the vote-stealing traders are being successful because everybody in town knows that, that name right there, D-E-H-N-E. The most famous name, and one of the most popular names in the community, right behind Kaepernick, would be on, should be up on that dais right there. He actually should have been there long ago, should have been the governor and probably senator by now, except for one thing, lady. Oh, and by the way, Sam is the driving force, has been the driving force behind 90% of the good things that have happened to Reno. He's also, in the 90% of the bad things that have happened to Reno, Sam Dene, me, has warned against. Thus, I've saved over $247 million, and that is not counting the amount of money I would have saved if, if it wasn't for, there's Burning Man, I say Burning Man, the kayaking course, I was a driving force in the kayaking park downtown. I was, I was a driving force in the city manager. I was a driving force in, in elect, in hiring the chief of police. But there's one thing, ladies and gentlemen, that has destroyed this city, destroyed this city and caused more damage, trepidation, and humility to Reno than anything else. And one of them is sitting right over there, and there's another one sitting over there, and there's a camera back there. It's the dysfunctional, the dysfunctional and pathetic people who call themselves the Reno media. They have no shame. They have no courage. They have no embarrassment. You cannot say, and I cannot say enough nasty words, justifiable nasty words, to even, to even get them to have the gumption to say that Sam Dene is full of beans. Here he is, I'm telling them right now to their face, choosing them off in the corner over there. Sam Dene says, "You guys are a bunch of cowards. You're pathetic. You don't tell the truth. You are the reason that Reno is in basically de facto bankruptcy. You're the reason that we had that problem with the fire department yesterday, which Sam had the solution to in three minutes. You took three hours going through minutia. Sam had the answer in three minutes. The media was all here watching that. Not one word about it." And we have some famous people in the audience looking, I don't know if they're looking spellbound or thinking, "Who the hell is that Sam Dene guy? He's really going off today, isn't he?" Well, let's see if the media wants to cut, wants to cover their own butt of fucos and challenge Sam's words.
Well, I would like to correct one statement. The city of Reno is not in bankruptcy and even close to it. No, sir, you're out of order.
Say what I did. So what?
Oh, Lord, here we go. That's ends public comment. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the council, as well as the public, that the next regular city council meeting will not take place until August 20th. There will be a council meeting the following week on Wednesday, August 27th, before we get back to our regular schedule of one meeting every two weeks. We also have a possible budget workshop on August 6th. I'd also like to congratulate the U-16 Lady Nomads of the Sagebrush Soccer Club who competed last week in the President's Cup in Greenville, South Carolina. The nomads who made it all the way to the championship match are the first girls team from Nevada to go to Nationals. I'd also like to congratulate the Reno Heat, a local 16U travel softball team who will compete for a national title in the Premier Girls Fast Pitch National Championship in Huntington Beach, California on July 19th through 25th. The Senior Summer Games, the, it's a reminder that the Reno Tahoe Senior Summer Games will be held August 4th through 10th. The program is dedicated to promoting and implementing fitness programs and activity for people 50 and older. Participants compete within age groups to win gold, silver, and bronze medals. And for more information, you can visit reno.gov/seniorgames or call 334-INFO. And finally, hopefully you've all had a chance to see the Believe art sculpture on temporary display across the street at City Plaza. We wanted to let citizens who appreciate and support the sculpture know that they can help ensure that it stays a permanent display here in Reno. They can visit reno.gov/believe and follow the instructions on how to donate.
All right. Thank you very much. Going to approval of the agenda. Item F-1 is pulled. L-6 and 7 will be moved up after the consent agenda. There will be a presentation of economic development update. There is not, well, item F-1 is pulled, there is not a public hearing this evening. Any other items to pull?
Well, I do have a question, Mayor. Item F-1 is a rather large policy-related issue involving the annexation of a big parcel, piece of land in southwest Reno. I have a question. Why is that being pulled? And was, it's incorrect? Oh, it was withdrawn as an application? Okay. I didn't get the memo, but I was, because I was wondering if notices went out or so on. Okay. The application has been withdrawn. Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Motion for approval? Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for June 20th and June 25th?
Second.
Have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments, any changes or anything? Any, all right. Motion second. Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. No proclamations today. We have a presentation on economic development.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Bill Thomas, assistant city manager. As the council well knows, each council meeting, we like to present to the public and to the council a business in our community that has done some great things to further our economy. And we really do this to try to highlight to everybody the diversity and complexity and also the energy of what's going on in our economy. So today, we're have, fortunate to have with us Allison Prentice, who is a co-founder and CEO of the Creo Monday International Company, which happens to be located in Sparks, but is very active in our region. And they have created, or are creators, of the Keys Clear Protein Drink. So I'd like to invite Allison up here to explain to the council and the community all the great things that her company's done.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having me here. It's really great to be here. I'm actually a Canadian, transplanted to Reno Sparks area, and brought my company here in 2010, and I actually moved here in 2012. Coming from Toronto area, this is the best thing that I could have done. I was so done with humidity that coming to nice, dry Reno is beautiful. So I just wanted to take a few minutes today to talk about how it takes a team to build a company. Sorry, just a moment. That, that's, I think that's the team, so just as a-
That's the background music for your show.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I accept. Okay, I accept. Okay, thank you. Okay, I have three minutes, otherwise, my phone dissolves, so I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. So, as I said, I came from Canada to Nevada, I moved here to launch in the battle-born state. I don't know, do I do the slide thing? Am I in charge of this? There we go. I moved here because I knew that the US was more familiar with entrepreneurial startup companies, get us all going, and it was a great state to, to come and do business in. I love the local support and local financing that we have. Skolari's was the first to take us in and put us on the shelf, and they have been absolutely tremendous support for us since we, since we moved the company here. Renown, we, we were in Renown Health and still are in Renown Health, their healthy options, casing there for the staff room. We, we went through four orders in five weeks, it was going off the shelf so quickly. And now, we also have the physicians there who are recommending it to their patients because they understand the purity of the product that, that we have. Bank of the West is another partner of local support and, and local financing. They've been absolutely tremendous for us. I couldn't think of a better bank to do business with. They, they've really set up opportunities for us. So, we're, we really appreciate the local support and local financing that, that we have. It also involves, I think, for us as a company to be able to do things back to the community, and so we have some local sponsorships. The Reno Aces, we were introduced to them by our Chamber of Commerce membership, and we're now the official protein drink of the Reno Aces. They actually have us being sold in the concession stands, and the Reno Aces literate, literally and figuratively went to bat for us to have Dr. Pepper step aside because Dr. Pepper saw us as competition and didn't want to be in the concession stands. It went as high as the VP of the Reno Aces, Eric Adelstein, who got the legal team involved and said, "There's nothing like us out there, and they want us in there as a healthy option," and we're in there and doing quite well, thank you. We also support Liz Lyles, who's a Reno athlete. She's an Ironman athlete who's just unbelievable. She's 36 years old, two young kids, a husband, and she still trains for Ironman. She won the Western Australia Ironman Championship this past December. She just this month came in a strong second-place finish in Frankfurt, Germany, and we're going to be honoring her at the Reno Aces game on August 8th, doing first pitch and having her family there. So, it's really important for us to also give back to the community in terms of local sponsorships and supporting local events. We were at Reno Tahoe Odyssey, the Renovate Run, we donated, I think, close to 1,500 pounds of product to the shelter donations for, for people who needed the extra protein, and supporting the Reno Tahoe Open Women's Day. We did that last year, we're doing it again this year. So, we like to give back and, and support locally as much as the local and state levels are supporting us. Others have pitched in as well. We're getting a lot of interest with the media, we're getting RDJ, who's done some articles, the Northern Nevada Business Weekly has done articles with us. We were part of Next Best Bartender, and so we're on some newscasts, and, and that one was actually pretty funny because they were talking about the show, but then the newscaster sort of started to say, "22 grams of protein, only six grams of sugar," and then it was like, "Oh, yeah, but I'm doing Next Best Bartender." So, it was really great to get that opportunity to, to be in front of, of the media. So, we appreciate the support for the local company that's bringing healthy drinks to support local health and economy here, and we see this is going to be a global company. So, I'm really pleased and, and proud to have Sparks Reno as, as the location for the international headquarters. I always say it takes a team to build a company. We're building it in the city that I call the biggest little secret because I don't know why more businesses and more people are not here in, in northern Nevada. I think it's the most amazing community, both to live and to do business, and these are some of the photos from my backyard. So, I'm really enjoying being here in northern Nevada.
Well, we welcome you and thank you for bringing your company here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great little product.
Thank you.
All right, now, we'll go to the consent agenda. I want to pull item E1A1 because I'm going to be recusing myself on that one, so I want to participate on the rest of it. Any you want to pull for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull E3, please.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor, for discussion, E1A2.
E1A2. All right, any others? Chair to entertain a motion to approve? Huh? Oh, yes, I do, I'm sorry. Mr. Denae. I tried to overlook certain things, but I just couldn't today. He's getting a haircut this week.
Anyway, Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, trying to catch my breath, just wondering, wondering, as I segue in, I'm the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, Air Force Academy graduate, been to every meeting since, since all of these news, all these news media people were probably in kindergarten or something. At any rate, I am trying to catch my breath and wonder what's going to happen on Channel 4 tonight after I, I won't say I chose off Channel 4, but some people out in the lobby thought I did. I'm just curious to see if Channel 4 is going to have the gumption to even say anything about it, or they'll just let people go watch it on YouTube because that's where it's going to be tonight. Sam's diatribe, and I'm segueing in. I noticed that, I saw this, Robert Kuchel is going to get a liquor license. I could have sworn you already had. What's the chortle about? She's laughing. Robert Kuchel's getting a liquor, alcohol license, excuse me, and he's looking stupefied for the mayor, I mean, excuse me, I didn't mean to say that, but you're looking askance, how's that? And it says, Robert Kuchel is getting a liquor license down there at Winter's Corners Crossings, and, however, I see this junior, and I have to remember, I have to tell everybody here, I've been to all of these meetings, and I have to admit, I don't know if the mayor is the junior, or if his father was the junior, or if his son is the junior, but I'm sort of assuming, since he's recusing himself, that it's him, no?
I'm the senior.
You're the senior, okay. Now, everybody knows that. So, this is his son getting this, and I've got nothing for-
Need to say.
Junior's senior.
Saying.
Is that what your son says? You're senior to me.
I'm the old goat.
At any rate, his son is going to get a liquor license. Everybody in town has a liquor license, so what's the big deal there? I'm in favor of that, and the, the general, um, part of this consent agenda, for the folks who wonder, that's where they're going to vote on these things all at once, except for a few they pulled out. I'm looking at E6 here, where the police department is going to get a $35,000 input for the narcotics prevention and enforcement operation, and I'm certainly not against that, but with, with, with medical marijuana licenses coming down the line, of course, it should have happened a year ago when Sam, when it became law, and Sam said, "Let's get those licenses out there so these people who are sick can take advantage of this medical marijuana legally," and yet, we're still dragging our heels, trying to figure out whose friends are going to get the, whose friends are going to get these valuable dispensaries. So, I'm, my point here is that this, when, when the police receive this marrow, this narcotics, because I guess they still consider marijuana a narcotic, I do hope that they're going to have some logic in their interpretation of the use of medical marijuana and allow, and allow people to take advantage of a Nevada law that is in force and should be applied soon.
Thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item E3.
Wait, wait.
Let me go.
Yeah, why don't you?
E1A1.
Okay.
I guess I'll take that one, Mr. Mayor.
E1A2. I'll leave on the other one.
Okay.
I don't think you have to leave, it's only going to take a second.
E1A, E1A2.
Me, me, okay. Phew, that's tough. First off, on this consent agenda, I'd like to point out that it should get the award for collectively the most unique names of entities on one agenda, between the, the picnic pug, pub, and patio and the Lucky Beaver Bar and Burger. So, kudos to whoever came up with these names. Can we have the representative come up and just explain, this, this intrigues me, as to what, what exactly the, the business plan is? Bring your own-
They want you to show up over there.
To, to cook?
I want to do.
To cook? I don't, I, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager. I'm going to call up the applicant so he can explain what, what their concept is.
Hey, guys, Trevor Lepick, owner of Picnic Pub and Patio, Noble Pie Parlor, and Ampersand Bar and Lounge, and hello to Mr. Mayor and the city council. If you guys have any questions, or I can just talk about it, whatever.
Can we just tell us what it is?
Yeah. Picnic Pub and Patio is essentially a, a bar where you, a community grill and smokeyard. You have a bar inside, and then outside, we have a bring-your-own barbecue yard. It's essentially an outdoor kitchen, like a large outdoor kitchen, and akin to what you would have at a park, just much more organized and clean, and people come and check out a grill station, sign a liability waiver, get utensils, and then they are free to use the grills to cook their own meat or veggies or what have you, and then we have attendants in the actual grill and smokeyard to monitor what people are doing and make sure that, you know, if anyone is, um, putting themselves in danger, anybody else in danger, they would, you know, be removed from the yard, so, essentially a grill yard bouncer.
Okay, it was just, it was, it's new, I've never-
Yeah, it's a-
Seen or heard of such a thing.
Very unique concept, I mean, there's-
Do you help people if they need, you're the chef and the expert, do you help them with, they have questions?
That's, exactly, that's part of the reason why we have, we'll have people out there. If people do have questions, or they need help, or tips, or whatnot, we won't actually do the cooking for them, but we can, we'll make recommendations to them, and, and it's also, you know, we're hoping to make it a, a venue for special events, catering, weddings, private parties, chefs, chefs dinners, stuff like that, you know? Collaborating with other chefs from restaurants around town and, and the Reno Tahoe area, so.
Okay. Oh, and then, so during the non-grilling season, you'll be a bar with indoor bar service and all, and-
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still a bar-
Okay.
No matter what, and, um, we're exploring some, some different options to, uh, basically still have some sort of food offering. We're not applying for a dining room beer and wine license, we're not, it's not going to be, or a liquor license, it's not, we're not going to be serving food, you know, we're not serving the food, people are cooking their own food, so, but-
And the closure is 10:00 PM in this neighborhood?
11:00 PM.
Okay, I thought it was 10. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item E3.
In terms of E3, I, I have a few questions. Is there already a, an installation of some sort on this, on the premises here?
Lori Miles, Public Works. At one point, when AT&amp;T went out there, there was a, a ham radio-
Oh, okay.
Tower that has since been removed, it was encroaching.
That was the encroachment, okay. Because I had heard, when it went through the site plan review with the Community Development Department, that there already was an installation there, and so then they did do a noticing on the site plan review for zoning purposes on this, is that what planning did?
I, I do believe, yes, they've already done the site plan review.
Okay, and there wasn't any notice, any neighborhood concern? I guess my other question is, in the discussion, you referenced Resolution 6812, which I like to read because it was the city council at one point put a lot of time in coming up with the policies related to installing wireless, these communication towers on our property, and, I don't know, maybe some of the other council members remember in 2006 adopting this, and then essentially, we're blowing it off and not getting the appraisal, which is specified in the policy. So, so why is the policy not working for us now, and why aren't we getting a, an appraisal? And I'll, I'll read, um-
Lori Miles, Public Works, again.
Yeah.
I believe when the policy was set, the, under NRS, there is no appraisal requirements under 268059 or the RMC for public utility.
Yeah.
And I think that got missed in the resolution, so we've just, we've had one that we've been based off of.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, what, what I see is, the city council at one point said, "We're, you know, we want to deal with this policy area, and we want extra guidance beyond what's in NRS or RMC, we want to have a process. A resolution is a statement of intent of how they're going to do things, and one of the things in there was, we're going to do it based upon appraised value," and you didn't go out for an appraisal. How, why did you not apply the policy? It's not a, it's not like ordinance that we have to follow ordinance, or certainly charter, but it is, at one point, the council decided they wanted to have a policy on how we cite and go about, particularly for equity issues, it seemed like, in reading that resolution, which I asked the clerk to send to me.
For the record, John Flansburg, Public Works. So, the decision today is, we do have an appraisal from 2007. We could go out and do another appraisal, it's, it's an expense, so I guess we're looking at it, and, and we believe that through other appraisals that we've had, that a judgment issue here is a 2007 appraisal, and what we have today are, we believe are going to be very similar, and so we are recommending that we bring it to you today, based on that 200, 2007 appraisal, for, for your consideration of approval. If, if you would, if you choose not, and you direct staff to go out and get an appraisal, we can certainly go out and pay for another appraisal to bring that back to you at that time and, and see what the difference in result is.
Yeah, I mean, the policy says that, you know, the applicant pays for all these, you know, costs we carry. I guess that explanation's fine, you know, I'm, I don't know what 2007 property appraisals are compared today, who knows, maybe they're awash, but it's just, you know, one, I like to be sensitive to other determinations that previous councils made, particularly its direction to staff, and knowing, you know, if we're not going to follow it, why, and maybe we want to have some consideration of, of reda, removing or eliminating that resolution on the books, so, okay, thank you.
And, and certainly, we've, we've stated all that in the staff report, been completely transparent in what we're requesting today.
Yeah, now that I have the resolution, I, that was helpful, too. Thank you. All motion.
One second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Ladies and gentlemen, on item E1A1, just now, I need to disclose, I think that my son is the appropriate verdict license for the Winter's Corners Crossings. Since my daughter's out, and may be construed as providing a benefit to my son, I need to invest in the public that has enough good faith in any manner on this expansion being made in terms of protection of the children's office, which inspired me to make the decision.
Can I, can I get a motion? I need a motion. Thank you. And a second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously with one abstention. Hey, welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now, we're going to pull out of L6 and L7. I've been asked by the board of directors and the two different agencies, we'll do item L6 first. VSA Nevada, when they moved the col, when they moved the building from the Coliseum to this piece of property, I think the intent was, is that let them get established, see if they're going to do it, and it's been over 12 years now, and it's a, it's a-
It's been over 12 years now, and it's a, it's a miniscule lease, but I think we should have a clawback if they want to sell it or do anything. But I recommend that we give the city manager permission to use two or more items to put a program together.
I have a little comment on that, and I remember when the building was over there, and the city graciously decided to find a home for that building, which is so important. But that was a city parking lot, and I've read the existing lease that the city attorney's office sent to me, and I know there was a provision in that lease that that parking associated with that property would be for the public in hours when there's not, when it's not being used by the VSA. I went over there on Saturday night when Pops on the River was going on, and it was just, you know, the river, the Wingfield was packed, and that parking lot only had four parking spots utilized. And it was all posted, so people didn't know that they could park there and towing. And I followed up with Dave Iasi, who wanted that provision in there, and he said, yeah, it's really just people who park there who know that, you know, they won't get towed. But I feel that we have a need and a responsibility to provide parking to the public for events in that area. I mean, we just saw picnic come in, and the other guys, the fishing guide, we're seeing businesses grow up in that area. So I'd like, as a part of that exploration, for us to think about maybe reserving a few of the parking spaces for VSA, and the rest for maybe metered parking, so we can provide parking to our people who go down to Wingfield and use the river.
And I think VSA Art is willing to work with us on the parking, so the flexibility would be there for parking, but I don't want to see metered parking in there.
Well, I think metered parking is the future, I really do. In these districts, it helps, and I've read a 250-page book on best practices of parking recently about these pocket parking lots in revitalizing business districts. But I think, you know, maybe VSA gets three or four, and the rest goes public meter with them to have the ability to, you know, request our parking administrator...
Well, when they have kids going in there and stuff like that, they need all the parking they can get, and having meters for parents to bring their kids down to VSA Art. But that's something we can look at and bring back.
Well, I would like to look at, because, you know, 15 parking spaces, it's a public resource, and parking needs to be used so efficiently at all hours of time. And it really is a best practice. So I think you have direction to explore a few alternatives, and we'll be looking for you to bring that back then.
Yes.
But I think we do have a difference of approach here.
For the record, Assistant City Manager, I just want to make sure that the clarity was that we will talk to them about their intentions of use, and see what ability there is to provide for public parking.
Yeah.
Without a specific solution, but then we'll come back to you, and we'll say, here's what they are willing to do, here's what we think might happen, then ultimately you can decide.
With options, because I think we have a division of thought here, and only two of us have weighed in, and, you know, others might want to also. And also, as you go through this process, neighbors might have an issue.
I think the biggest rub's probably going to be the issue of when VSA needs it. And so our preliminary conversation with them is, they feel when they're open, they're going to need them, so there may be some capacity available when they're not.
They need them all, at all, they need them at all hours, they feel they need, how many spaces are we talking about?
I don't know that we talked, we're talking 11 spaces.
11 spaces.
I don't know that we talked about all hours. The concept that we presented to them, because we were aware of the severe concern, was whether they were willing to consider that, they said they thought they would need them. So we need to go back, based on your direction today, to talk to them, to see if there's somewhere between them taking them 100% of the time, 365 days a year, and some capacity for the public to park there. So we'll broach that with them.
I think it has to be flexible, but I think they should control it, but they can have flexibility so that on special events like Pops on the River, then it would be open for the public. Okay? But you've got instructions, you can come back.
And, Mr. Mayor, if staff is...
I need a motion.
And if staff is looking for direction when they're putting this together, if we can resolve right now, the meters are not, so you don't spin your wheels on that, I think that the intense use by young, by children of that facility, five days, no, no, it's even six days a week during daytime hours, really does suggest or command us to leave that open parking. I would not be in favor of meters there.
Nor would I.
So, I mean, I see the value of the VSA, but we're willing to give 11 spaces to their exclusive use for whatever art programs they have, rather than reserving for the public, you know, the Pops on the River, the mom who comes down...
But they're going to leave it open, they're going to look at it, and they'll leave it open, so they, you can use the 11 on Saturday or Sunday when you're having something in the park.
Yeah, my concern with the meters, Jenny, is I think it's more of, we have a kind of a policy now during evenings and weekends where we don't charge for a lot of parking. And I think the availability of that parking lot is going to be potentially during the evening and weekends, and I think it's going to be confusing if you throw meters in there. So I would agree, I think this kind of, to me, is similar to maybe like the Imperial Lounge did, when the business during the day, the business building says that's restricted for the business building, but at night it releases, and the Imperial can use it for their parking for the evening use. So maybe there's some situation...
We'll take our direction, I think Councilor Breckus is right, which is, how do you maximize the use of the parking? That's what we'll approach.
And then, all right, before we take a vote, can I do L six and seven at the same time? On L six, but, okay, before I take a vote, Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I certainly, as everybody knows, except the media, have, I have much bigger fish sticks to fry than parking meters. But I am the parking meter historian, I've been following and working and challenging parking meters before any of you, anybody in this room is even around. I'm the most senior guy in this building now, I think, pretty close to it. At any rate, way back in the day, there was a deal that I put before the council, and it was approved, a deal where the citizens could come down and go to their city council meetings and not have to pay to go. Suddenly, you moved from the perfectly good city hall building over there, came over here, grandfathered it in, and you were allowed to park here for free, and I'm switching into parking meter stuff because it was brought up. You could park here for free and go to see your government in action. Now, suddenly, about a year later, unilaterally with no vote, you just did that away with that. And I'm not nitpicking, he's giving me that look because it's a, Sam's got his $100 bill out there, and he can afford to pay to come here.
Let's talk about the issue.
But why should citizens have to pay to come to their city council meetings? And then they can go over there...
This is not about parking meters, this is about the VSA Art.
Well, the whole time you talked about parking meters, I'm saying if you have to pay to park here, you should have to pay to park there, but that, okay...
You can park in the garage free anytime.
Huh? Can I have your parking spot where you put your Bentley most of the time?
No, sir, you park in the garage.
Okay, you see what happens there? Okay, back onto the agenda. I was segueing in because you've spent that whole time talking about that. At any rate, I think I made my point. My other point is, I don't think, I don't think you should be allowed to give away the citizens' land. Let them continue paying a dollar a year, or whatever you want. Here, it says on here, you're going to convey the real property, and by convey, that means you're going to give them, convey to them the property, and I don't see any reason why you should give them that property. I think you should wait, I should, you just don't do it. And I would like to come up and talk on number seven, since I turned that in. But anyway, as a citizens, albeit the Encyclopedia Reno Government, who's been to more meetings than all the people here added together, I'm saying, don't give them that land for free. It's not a big fish stick, but I'd say no.
Thank you very much. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Now we go to item L seven, go ahead and say what you got to say, Mr. Denae.
Get it out of the way, right, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, get it out of... Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I'm not going to talk about parking meters, I'm not going to talk about the media and how dysfunctional they are, I'm just going to say, I do not, it's just like the last one, I do not think you should give away this land. I don't see the reason for giving away the land. It's not a big fish stick, there's more important things going on, but if it was a yes or no, I'd say do not give the land away.
Thank you very much. What I'm asking for is the same thing as I did on L six, is for us to be able to use two or more hours.
I have a question, I have a few questions about this. I was not aware, does the city own the property that the auto museum sits on?
Yes, that was part of the deal when they first moved it out of Harris.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. And, you know, like, on the cell tower locational issue, you know, I tried about a year ago to bring to the council a discussion on real estate policies, what we, inventorying, what we, you know, what are the family jewels, you know, what could be disposal? We didn't go there. So we're dealing with ad hoc situations, and I understand, and I understand your interest on this. And I don't know how I feel about this at this point, I have not read that lease. No, 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 the existing lease. And furthermore, didn't the automobile museum recently acquire the property just to the east, that vacant land?
Lori Miles Public Works. We own the ground, not the structure, and I don't know if they've acquired the adjacent land or not.
There's an individual that's on their board that has acquired the land, and they're talking about some other... Ms. Frady, do you want to say anything?
I'm Jackie Frady, the executive director of the museum. And we're getting ready to celebrate the museum's 21st anniversary this fall. And through that process, we were looking at the future of the museum, and looking at what's the next steps involved. And the Community Foundation of Western Nevada has purchased the property east of the museum, and we're in the process of exploring an expansion of our property. And by giving us the real property, we will be able to connect to our current museum, and then build through our parking lot and on that property, east of the museum, and enlarge the facility. And I want to thank the city of Reno over the years for the generous support of the museum, of course, in helping us with the property as we progressed.
And I do remember that 21 years ago, when Harris, Bill Harris passed away, and everybody, because Holiday Inn was selling off their cars...
That's right.
And everybody in town wanted to make this happen, so the city council came up with this land to help them with it.
That's correct.
And now they've been there for 21 years, so I personally feel that they're going, they're established, and they're going to stay. And I know some of the plans of what they'll do, and they'll come back and show us, new music, new displays, showrooms, and stuff like that with other people, and a lot of local people will have their own showrooms.
Well, I mean, I'm a big fan, very excited, think you add so much to our community, it's just, we made some really hard decisions yesterday on our budget, and we're in a tough situation. So, you know, look, thinking about the assets we have, we have to think of it from that perspective. What has our lease been with you? How much have we, has it been annually?
We entered the lease in 1996, a 40-year lease with a 40-year renewal, and it's $1 per year.
Uh huh, okay.
And if you recall in the early history, when Mr. Harris died, and then Holiday Inn's purchased Harris Hotels and Casinos, there was this enormous public outcry from the citizens in Reno as well as Nevada to try to save a portion of that collection. The governor stepped in and helped, the city of Reno helped, land was acquired, a nonprofit board was established to fulfill that, that goal.
Sure, I mean, I was 10/11 growing up in the Bay Area, and we came down for the day to see the collection, that was my first, you know, interaction with Reno, so the collection's very special to me in that memory. I guess I'm supportive of it, I just, what's the next step if we go forward? I'm supportive of exploring it. What's the next step?
The next step would be to give city manager discretion to spend two or more hours putting together a thought proposal of turning the land over to them. Because I want to tell you that I love having them down here, but do they want to go spend a bunch of million dollars building new buildings? Or do they just want to walk away from this and build new buildings somewhere else?
Okay.
Because that could happen. All right, any other questions right now? I'd love them, motion? Oh, I've got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Now we go to, we've already done those. G one.
G one is ordinance number 6337, ordinance to amend Title VIII of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Public Peace, Safety, and Morals by amending Chapter 8.22 entitled nuisances, Article II entitled unlawful acts by amending section 8.22.090 entitled unlawful to permit or allow the existence of nuisance, to afford property owners a minimum of 30 days to abate a condition that is not an immediate danger to the public, health, safety, or welfare, and that was caused by criminal activity of a person other than the owner and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Second.
It's a move to adopt.
Which is ordinance number 6338, ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Buildings and Construction by amending Chapter 14.05 entitled Property Maintenance Code by amending section 14.05.010 entitled Adoption of the 2012 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code to add a new chapter to the adopted 2012 edition, which addresses downtown property maintenance standards identified as Exhibit B and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to adopt. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item G three.
Which is ordinance number 6339, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning, Resoning, a 7.3 acre site located east of the intersection of Yee Haw Way and Desert Way from LLR 2.5 Large residential 2.5 acres to SF 15 Single Family Residential 15,000 square foot, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item G four.
Which is ordinance number 6340, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning, Resoning, a 1.3 acre site located at the south terminus of Reactor Way, 565 Reactor Way from NC Neighborhood Commercial to PF Public Facility, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Resolutions, item H one.
Resolution 7991, resolution authorizing filing of a grant application with the State of Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for 2014 Federal Land and Water Conservation Funds under the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Program for the North Valleys Recreation Partnership Project in the amount of $500,000, an allocation of $250,000 from Park District One for matching funds if grant is awarded.
Got a motion to adopt, I have a second. Motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H two.
Resolution 7992, resolution donating Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to the Turdenay Outreach to defray expenses associated with its sponsorship of the United States Hand Cycling Federation Series at the Turdenay Competition to be held in Reno in August 2014 in the amount of $5,000.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to I items, I one, I one, can we can take these together, correct? So we'll take item, both the I one items together?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney, yes, you can take the items together, but I one one requires a separate motion.
Correct. I do have a public comment for him, Mr. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and again, one of, one of the driving forces for getting this medical marijuana dispensary license operation going, and I came to the podium almost immediately after the, after Nevada approved medical marijuana as a legal situation, and I came to the podium, and that was long ago, and spoke in favor of it. You, I don't remember, I think it was maybe a year and three or four months ago, and you put in abeyance, I think you called it an abeyance on it, and another abeyance, and I said at the time, you should put a time limit on that abeyance. And here we are, over a year later, just still rolling that ball down the hill, and there's people getting sick and dying. It's a legal situation, folks, and you're dragging your feet, so, not just you, so was Sparks, so was the county commission, everybody's dragging their feet, and I'm wondering what's going on? How hard is it to do this? You set up the deal, and you find out who wants to have these dispensaries, but we know a lot of people want to be able to use this legal substance to make themselves feel better. I have to admit, I don't do that kind of stuff, tequila's fine to me, but a nice chortle over there. At any rate, I think that this, I think that this thing should be moving along much faster. Everybody I speak with says it should be moving along faster. And as I said at the last meeting, when this came up, and the meeting before that, and before that, when these, when these licenses do go out and you allow people... before that, when these licenses do go out and you allow people to actually have dispensaries, create dispensaries to be able to legally sell this medication, I don't think it should be handed out to the friends and the buddies of special interest. These licenses should be put out randomly, although the people who are qualified and want to have one of these dispensaries should be allowed to have the equal chance to have a dispensary. It should not be given out to somebody who knows somebody, or somebody who knows somebody. Maybe these deals that are done in the back smoky rooms of the bars. It should be out in the open, and everybody should be given an equal chance to have one of these licenses. Everybody who is qualified.
Okay, I know we've heard this item several times, but I know staff's got some revisions to what's in our staff report, so I think we probably should get at least that, and then see if there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Does anybody want more than that?
No, I think that works.
Okay.
Members of the council, Mr. City Manager Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager. We do have some amendments. I'm going to ask Sean Oliphant, our outside legal representative, just to review those. They should be at the table. You had a handout earlier. I think there's just about five items.
There are five changes that are being proposed to be made to the packet that you received and the ordinance you received. The first one is just really moving a section. On-site use of marijuana is prohibited at the medical marijuana establishments. We had that, we've just moved it into the unlawful section. Number two, we have revised how a violation of the ordinance is punishable. Right now, in your packet, you had it punishable pursuant to RMC 8.17.060, which was really use of marijuana, not necessary violations of the ordinance. So we have revised that. The third one, and perhaps the largest one, is the requirement for the establishments to obtain CGL insurance and an umbrella policy, and to name the city as an additional insured. So that is a new section that's added. The fourth one is allowing the Chief of Police and the Fire Department the ability to access a medical marijuana establishment at any time. And the fifth one was a confidentiality of records provision. The records that the medical marijuana establishments provide to the Health Division are deemed confidential under state law, but there was nothing requiring or allowing the local jurisdiction to maintain those same records as confidential. So we added a provision in there that the local jurisdiction, that the city could retain those documents as confidential to the same extent as if those documents were provided to the Health Division. So it's our recommendation to approve the ordinance with these changes.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Oliphant. Just want to get something of confirmation is, in terms of, you know, process and the confidentiality of records, we're accepting zoning verifications letters now. We have a little form, and that'll have who the applicant is and the address, and that will be a public record. It's really, the confidentiality is really related to the medical nature, not necessarily the zoning requirements.
Yeah, we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance which allows for confidentiality of who is applied for zoning verification letters or where the property may be located.
Okay.
This is really for the business license and privileged license documents.
Okay, just like right now on our privileged licenses, I think we used to have social security numbers and other data births and all that. Okay, and that's fine. And then as a matter of process, the County Commission is going to put on their agenda our request again, is that what it was, as follow-up to our last discussion?
For the record, Kayden Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. Yes, Councilmember Brekkas, I do believe that they are going to have that item as a standing item on each of their agendas for the next several weeks. They will need to make that decision before the close of the state's application period, which is August 15th, I believe, and they are scheduled to have their last meeting on August 12th. What they had indicated two prior meetings, two meetings ago, was that what they intended to do was, to the extent possible, compile a diagram, if you will, of the locations within Reno, Sparks, and the unincorporated area where those zoning verification or similar in the other jurisdictions, sort of map out the various locations, and then use that as part of their decision-making process in determining if they are going to make any adjustments to the percentage allocation of medical marijuana dispensaries. So that decision could come forward sooner, but I anticipate that because applicants are still coming to the local governments for the zoning verification letters, that they probably will need to wait until that last meeting before the close of the application period.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, I see that strategic on their end to see what they want to do, and we can have that kind of flow of information, how many come forward, and also, and I just want to take the opportunity to say, I feel really like we've done a very good thorough job. We've been maybe a little slower, but a little more deliberate. I think it's shaping up very well. I think our policy position of access to medicine is very good. I want to thank the Police Department and CDU went on their little visits and brought back some useful information, and Mr. Chomp and the rest of staff down in Carson, and Mr. Oliphant. So I feel really good so far about how we're taking into this new step.
Any other questions?
So I do need a motion to accept the business impact statement and find that the adoption of the ordinance does not impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business, nor directly restrict the formation or expansion of a business.
I'll make that motion because I think it's very true.
Second.
Motion and second? Discussion?
Can I get clarification? Yeah, this is just for these changes, correct? This vote?
No, it's the ordinance. We're going to get the ordinance next.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The business impact statement is for the entire ordinance, just not the changes.
And since, because we are in conflict of measuring from property line to property line versus door to door, is the only reason why I've not supported this ordinance in the past, I support these changes, these components within it.
This is for the business license, this isn't the zoning, correct, Michael?
This is just for the business license, though, correct? It has nothing to do with...
That's correct. The zoning, the change that...
The zoning's already done.
Yeah, I just want to validate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is that it? Okay, we do have a motion and a second to accept the business impact statement. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number I12.
Ordinance number 691, excuse me, it's bill number 6910. And it is an ordinance to amend the Reno Municipal Code Title 4, entitled Business License Code, Chapter 4.04, entitled In General by Revoking Chapter 4.04.065, entitled Stay on the Acceptance of Business License Applications Related to Medical Marijuana Establishments, amending Title 5, entitled Privileged Licenses, Permits, and Franchises by amending Chapter 5.05, entitled Licenses Generally, and adding a new Chapter 5.21, entitled Medical Marijuana Establishments, to provide for the licensing and requirements to operate medical marijuana establishments, including but not limited to dispensaries, cultivation facilities, testing laboratories, and production facilities which are registered and permitted by the State of Nevada under NRS Chapter 453A, and providing other matters properly relating thereto, which would include the five amendments listed by Mr. Oliphant prior to this being read.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to refer?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Dorch, would you please reopen item G4? I had a disclosure on that in introduction. I just want to make the same disclosure. I failed to do so.
So I need a motion to reconsider G4?
Motion.
To do that, correct? So I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This pertains to a school, a preschool kindergarten that my daughter attended, and my husband and I provide modest financial support to on an annual basis, and we also attend a number of their events. And that relationship and association with that organization does not in any way lead to the level of giving me any sort of inclination to not do my job and look at this in an unbiased manner, and that's why I did support this ordinance adoption.
So do I have a motion to approve?
I think it's just open, it's been adopted.
We had a motion to reconsider.
Okay, motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item J1.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The City Attorney's Office, in collaboration with the City Manager, has brought forward to you for seeking direction on how this council would like to see its outside labor relations services and legal services accomplished on behalf of the city. We put forward a plan in the staff report. There are several options that the City Council would have on this. City Council can use its powers to hire outside legal on the six, seventh vote. In addition, the City Attorney's Office could render these services. To do so, we will need to appropriately staff and man to provide those services. And we have provided a plan to allow a transition so that those services can be provided on behalf of the city. I think the one thing that would be of greatest concern is if there wasn't legal services in the area appropriately being provided to the city. I'm going to turn it over to the City Attorney himself because he had discussions with outside legal and has some current information on that as well.
Yes, John Cadlec, City Attorney. I did speak with the law firm of Fisher and Phillips, I keep wanting to call Fisher and Price, but Fisher and Phillips, and they did agree to certain cappings of the future services that they would do as far as representing the city in these matters are concerned. And I don't, it's, each one, it's like, two of them are capped at, I believe, $80,000 each, two of them are capped at $70,000 each. They would, anything beyond a certain date, anything beyond that, they would do for $3,000 a day, but they are capping that. So that would do, we wouldn't be coming back all of the time with asking for additional money for legal services. They're willing to do the things, which includes continuing on with the Supreme Court brief, and we would assist them, the City Attorney's Office would assist them where possible as far as these matters are concerned, so that we will try to limit the cost as much as possible. The money for this would come, I believe HR has $300,000 available in their budget for this very purpose, and would then be transferred to the City Attorney's budget for the purposes of the City Attorney hiring under the City Attorney's power these law firms to finish up what they've started, which includes, I believe, several arbitrations, a Supreme Court issue, and other matters. But at least everything is capped at this point, so you wouldn't go beyond what the cap is. There would be some certain expenses, but again, it would cap everything at around $300,000. I don't have the exact email, and they put that in an email to us. I just don't have that in front of me, unfortunately. I left it upstairs.
John, I just want to, I want to thank you for bringing this because I think it was extremely irresponsible for this body not to move forward in this manner. So I want to thank you for taking, representing the city in the manner you have and making sure that the citizens of this community are taken care of.
Okay, first of all, I want clarification, Mr. Cadlec, on who are they going to represent, then? Is it the attorneys, the City Attorney's Office? Are they, do they become the client, or is the council still the client?
The city is always the client of the City Attorney's Office, so it's just that...
So that would represent the council by bringing this firm back, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. They're going to represent...
The council, not the City Attorney's Office?
No, no, it's just that, under the six, seven vote process, you, the council members, through the manager's office, control the attorneys. Under this process, the City Attorney's Office would control the attorneys, but they're representing the city. It's always, the City Attorney's Office represents the city.
I just want to make sure that we still are the client. I just want to make that clear.
Oh, no, you are absolutely the clients, and you always will be, of the City Attorney's Office and of the outside council as well.
So the distinction that you're saying is that under this condition, they will report directly through you, but represent the city?
That's correct, and we will report back to you.
Under the prior relationship, they reported directly to the council and represented the city.
And we will absolutely provide updates for you.
That's a very big distinction.
If you want it at every meeting, we'll be happy to provide every meeting, or once a month, whatever this council would like, we would be happy to do it to make you feel comfortable with the representation. So if you want it, every meeting does report where we are, we're happy to do that. If you want it every, you know, like, once every two meetings, whatever you want, we'll do. That's not a problem.
So is this under the charter or NRS? What are you going after?
Combination vote.
Because what I want to know is then, why did we even vote on the last time it came up, if we were just going to find a loophole? And I think that's why people dislike government, because you didn't like the answer that you got, so you come back with this, and here we are.
Under the other process, it was the City Council that was hiring that, and for us to do it, it takes a six, seventh vote. That's the way we've always done that.
Okay.
And you've decided that you don't want to do it, which I think is irresponsible.
That's okay, you can have your opinion, let me have mine, it's okay.
And that's where we're here to discuss, though.
Okay.
We're here to debate.
Well, I'm asking him, I'm not asking you.
But we are here to debate.
No, we're not.
We debate and come to conclusions.
We're going to have to philosophically disagree.
Well, I mean, you claim to be a businesswoman in this town.
I am. Why are you spending a half a million dollars on attorneys? I'm asking for point of border, fair piece control this.
If someone is...Mr. Mayor, please. If someone is suing your company...
I'm not attacking you, Dwight.
One at a time.
I'm not attacking you.
If someone is suing your company, and you go to an attorney, and that attorney tells you, I don't have the resources or the expertise to handle your case, are you going to sit there and say, I'm sorry, I want you to represent me anyway?
Dwight, that's not what this is about.
It's exactly what this is about. That's exactly what happened. That's exactly what happened.
That is not what happened. First of all, it's become completely adversarial. We spent a half a million dollars on these guys, which, let me remind you, went over $175,000. I looked at these billings, they're all right here. The public would, this would make their mind blow, looking at these billings. They're outrageous, not to mention, at this price, a half a million dollars, we could have put a whole in-house labor team for a half a million dollars for a year. I mean, the money we've spent is outrageous. This isn't fiscally responsible, and going over...
Oh, it's fiscally responsible?
Going over $175,000? Dwight, we're going to have to disagree on this.
To have proper representation on these issues?
And we're making headway, that's the other thing is...
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
Once those two are finished, may I interject something? I don't want to interrupt them, but I at least want to have a chance to interject something that at least offer a thought. But I want them, when they're ready, I don't want to interrupt them, but I need to interrupt so I can at least get the thought out there at some point. Okay. Again, John Cadlec, the City Attorney. Here's the thing. What we've offered is a transition plan. I agree with Councilwoman Sheevy. You're right for the future. The problem is, this isn't the future. You've got to deal with two pieces. You've got to deal with now, and you've got to deal down the road. Unfortunately, well, I won't be here down the road, but you've got to start building, and that includes, for example, adding a labor person to HR. That includes adding an attorney to the City Attorney's Office who will be in labor relations. So in the future, you may have a hybrid where you have part outside council and part in-house council, which, if you look at the history of that, you actually had in-house council way back 20 years ago. It's unfortunate that attorney passed away, who was doing a lot of the labor negotiations. So you're right, for the future, we absolutely have to build, and you have to build in that way. But it's too late now to do that. We need to get these people in here as the experts now to finish up what they started, and then for the future, build for the future, so you have a hybrid, the best of both worlds. In other words, get the solution now for the short term, but build for the long term. It's a combination of doing two different things, and that's why we put the transition plan together so that you can add for the future. You're right, you need to do a different approach for the future. But right now, you've got to deal with where we are today, and where we are today, they've already participated substantially. I'm proud of our office because we stepped in and did the motion on the injunction.
Absolutely.
And I'm proud of the deputies and my chief who worked on it, and I was out of the country. We talked, I was in the airport in Chicago, we talked for 25 minutes discussing what we wanted to do, so, and I'm proud of those people who worked on it late into the night, so. But this is the transition plan for the future, but I agree, you have to look to the future as well as today.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sure.
I guess, you know, I don't think we're talking on topic directly, but, you know, Mr. Cadlec's comments here raise...
know, Mr. Cadlec's comments here raise a question to me of why in eight years there hasn't been an in-house labor attorney who's got twenty years in training and can do this, but the, the real point to me, and I support it retaining this council, but the perspective I come from is, is one in the charter and the respective authority and power of each body, the manager, the council and the city attorney. I do not believe that the city attorney has the authority to do this hiring. I had an email conversation with the city attorney's office today raising up the specific points of this section forty-one, I don't think there's applicability in this instance, you have responded you think there is, under this NRS forty-one, which I believe is a section you have to read in total, I think it applies very narrowly when the city is being sued or a public officer in the city is being sued and you're preparing for trial, it does not pertain to a nature like this of, of a grievance proceeding. Pardon me?
We are being sued.
No, no, but this is for representation during the, going into arbitration with the Reno Police Association and I also think that you don't have the authority because, in that statute, because it does not apply, it applies to judicial officers too, not necessarily a legislative body, so I think that the decision last week stand, last time stands that the, and I don't like it, I mean, but the charter says a very super-sized, small, a super-sized, small majority wins on this and they want, so we cannot go forward and appoint, do this transition plan and overrule that decision, that is going against our charter and if we don't operate by our charter, we are really a flawed organization and I want to see these people come on, I would ask one of the prevailing members under our ground rules last time to bring back the item as is allowed under our rules, to say, "Yes, I will hire Fisher back just to bring us to arbitration with the Reno Police Department." Would you, that's a middle ground, just for that, would you be willing to do that? I would offer that up as an L item, please do that.
And they do a pro forma based on the...
I, you know, I am just willing to go so small on the, on the other because the appeal, I think, we could be represented going up to the emergency management, or the, the employee board at the state, that's where the, this decision will be made on the firefighters. And so, I would offer that up as a request, but I will not support this because I think it is going against charter and it is pulling out of air a statute that is not applicable and I think the city attorneys are erring in their legal reading of this or in their responsibility to represent their client with truthful and factual information.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Well, I, I think the last time we spoke on this, I, I made my opinion about this pretty clear and, and needing to take a long-term, sustainable approach and, and not hiring this expertise outside counsel was a short-sighted approach to a long-term issue and, and let me just quote something from the Reno Gazette Journal who did a editorial on this issue and, you know, they, I thought they did a fantastic job in saying that, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars spent now could save millions down the road and that the city of Reno needs continuity in its labor negotiations, it needs a long-term solution for making sure its interests and taxpayers' interests have strong, consistent representation and they likened it to not have that as us going into a, a gunfight with a knife. So, I do believe that we need to retain and sustain expert legal counsel to help us with these very complicated, long, difficult negotiations and to think long-term for the taxpayers of this city, there are hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars at stake and to not be represented with the experts is doing a disservice to the taxpayers of the city.
Before we go to any motions or any else, two people wish to speak, Jeff Church.
Hold on, Austin.
Not the unaware, but I'll be fairly brief, I do want to support, I'm sorry, for the record, Jeff Church, resident of Reno, I do want to support somehow coming to a resolution where you do hire outside legal counsel, at least temporarily, the motion last week was a very broad one for overall labor issues and as was brought up today, you could bring it back specifically for the RPPA, RPSAE or the IAFF, Fire Department, et cetera, so I wouldn't say the motion's dead, I hope you would bring it back up, maybe kind of a line item thing and I strongly support the idea of hiring a non-attorney labor expert, there's many of them out there, some of them I know personally in California that would do an excellent job, obviously much less cost than a, a regular attorney, so I just hope we can get some resolution, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and the very first thing I have to say is anything, anything that was written by the Reno Gazette should be thrown in the sewer where it belongs, the Reno Gazette is a disaster to our community, at any rate, for the people out in TV land, what we have here is we've got a situation, we've got a city attorney office of Reno, Nevada, that has, I don't know, roughly eighteen full-time attorneys up there and what they want to do, what these folks want to do is to hire some experts, sort of denigrating the attorneys we already have, but they want to hire some experts who know how to handle these labor relations better than the city attorney's office can and I find it hard to believe that we do not, out of eighteen, maybe twenty, maybe sixteen attorneys, that we don't have a labor relations expert already on staff. It sort of reminds me, to, to put it in perspective, back, as an analogy, back when I was in the Air Force flying B-52s, they suddenly wanted to have some escort fighters for the B-52s, so they went out and brought in some fighters, some F-four Phantoms in to escort the B-52s and after a while, the B-52 pilots said, "We can do that" and everybody said, "Why don't you fly your own planes?" So, most of the, many of the B-52 pilots learned how to fly F-4s and they could do just as good as these guys that they brought in, so why don't we have some attorneys, full-time on the staff, or train some of these attorneys, we have a, a brilliant attorney standing back there against the wall, I will leave him unnamed, he could probably learn how to do relate, labor relationships, he doesn't even have to learn anymore, he could probably handle it and beyond that, I find it, philosophically, a little bit unfair that, that, that you're going to hire, use our taxes to hire outside people who are already paying millions of dollars to the city attorney's office, now you're going to use more of our money and I'm not taking sides because I don't have the backs of those firemen anymore, they don't have my back, they, they, they disgust me with their decision in this last election, they don't have my back anymore, I don't have theirs, I'm just trying to be middle of the road and even and the fact is that why, not taking sides, why should our taxes be spent to defend against the uni, the fire unions and the police unions and all of that where they have to go out and use their own money to get their own attorneys? So, just on the aspect of whether or not it's fair, I don't agree with it, at any rate, I do not think we should be hiring outside attorneys.
Thank you, bring it back to the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that, I somewhat expressed this previously, but I want to make sure it's clear and on the record that ninety percent of our employees are represented by a bargaining unit, one hundred percent of the services that we provide to this city are performed, one hundred percent of the services that we provide to the city are performed by those ninety percent of the employees that are represented by a union. Each of those unions have very qualified, power-horse representatives to state their cases when we're in any kind of conflict or contract negotiation. It is our financial and fiduciary responsibility to the citizens that we represent to give them the best, to hire people who do nothing but labor negotiations and understand labor law inside and out. We have a fabulous city attorney's office and I absolutely agree with the reference that there were some of those attorneys pulled in under very short notice to respond to immediate actions that needed to be taken and put in those, those we, ours, but they all, they're not there twiddling their thumbs, they don't have other responsibilities that they're, they are there with full slates already, they're running at a hundred and thirty percent already, to expect them to be able to come to the table for ninety percent of our employee representation and at least sixty percent of our budget for, for public safety alone is, is irresponsible. We need to use them what they're best suited for and we need to bring attorneys in who are best suited for labor, it is an example that is used across the nation and within our own community. These people that we hired, I actually recommended to us three years before we hired them, clearly because of their success in their field representing both sides, they are not extreme in what they bill or the positions that they take, they take a fair approach from negotiations at the Airport Authority and other municipalities in our state, it is not uncommon at all nationwide within our state or our own operations, we have the fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to protect their services as best we can and providing the best legal representation front-forward is our responsibility to this community.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First and foremost, I think this, this ludicrous, that we're even bringing this up again, how, what a slap in the face it is to our charter, that we have laws and we, we abide by them and we said no and then we go around and find loopholes to bring this back, that's, that's shameful. It's, it's a, it's embarrassing as well as that we now add caps to it when before it's basically we gave them blank check, now that's pretty shameful in itself when we talk about being the public eye and watching over our budgets, that should be something that we should be talking about as well. After this, which I am assuming you guys will have the votes to pass this one, NJ five, we're giving, we're going to give about eight hundred thousand dollars to this law firm, when yesterday we were talking about closing down Trainor Pool, closing down these other assets in our community and we feel as though this person's doing a legitimate job for our city, that should be embarrassing, because we feel that though we are getting the best person for the job when we asked, quite frankly, both Councilwoman Sheevy and I, to give us the opportunity to talk to these groups, when we made that decision last go-around, a flood of groups gave us a call and wanted to sit down and talk to us, we've had some positive conversations thus far and by putting this on the agenda, all we're doing is putting up another roadblock in the sense of saying, "We don't want to work with our employees, who are our employees and build a morale and move forward, yet we want to spend and provide blank checks to these groups because we don't want to sit down and talk to them." I think if we give it a second thought and put a pause on this stuff and give it an opportunity for us to sit down and have those decent conversations, we could go somewhere. But to expect that we're going to get somebody from outside of our region that's going to come in and abide by our rules is just, it's not going to happen, it's not happening. I was surprised to see the tactic that they're using and it's not one that I approved of, which is basically they're going down a checklist and trying to get down to the fact finding, that's not what I see an opportunity for us to work with our unions or with our employees. Again, it's, we, we, we're here talking about doing the best for our community because of the dollars that we have, the small dollars that we have and, and I completely don't, don't agree that that's what we're doing at the moment with giving almost eight hundred thousand dollars with what we did yesterday, with, 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 we had a cut. With regards to the editorial page and the RGJ, it'd be nice for them to call us and see what our side was and I know there's some people on our, on our council, they actually sat down with them and gave them their side and as we all know, the RGJ will print what they can, what they will, but when it's both sides sitting at the table, I think people understand where Councilwoman Sheevy and I were coming from and to, to take that away is, it's going to be quite the turnaround and so I hope all of you guys understand that, as much as when we are looking at our charter and we start finding ways on how we want to loophole it and, and pull whatever we want just to appease what we feel is right or wrong, is the wrong thing to do and that's not why we're up here to do that.
Okay. All right, did you have something, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. George.
Yeah, I, I just want to, just to respond to that, if, if we don't do this and if we continue to pander to the public employee unions, we're going to be closing a lot more than Trainor School. It's going to get, it's going to continue to get worse and yeah, they want to sit down with you guys and talk because I think they truly want to delay this until after November. I think they're looking to see who gets elected to this council that's going to do whatever these public, public employee unions want and continue to have these unsustainable contracts, that's why they want to delay this. I mean, I know I'm not going to change your mind, you're not going to change my mind, but I'm telling you right now, if we don't get our arms around these contracts, we are in big trouble down the road.
Mr. Mayor?
And, and to sit here and say that, that everything's working out because we can sit down with them, we've been trying to sit down with these unions for years and years and years and, and every time, it's, it's, they, they negotiate these little things that they can get more down the road so that they can get more down the road and never do any of those things that they negotiate and especially when you look at with fire, with the four-man crews, they, they've said that they'll die for, never going away from the four-man crews, that's the hill to die for, for them, yet that's the one thing this community needs the most.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, like I said, I applauded the work that they did under that and I understand the stakes that are at hand that Councilmember Zadra mentioned in terms of the dollar numbers, but I think there's something bigger here and this is a philosophy that the means justify the ends and I think I, that is not the way moving forward, I think, this council needs to act. It's very clear in the NRS statute that the, the attorney only has the ability in an action that involves a present or former judicial officer of that political subdivision, a present or former officer or employee of that subdivision, or a present or former member of a local board or commission. We're not under that Sub A and we're certainly not under Sub B, a person who is named as a defendant in action solely because of an alleged act of omission, act or omission related to the public duties or employment of a person, so we are not acting, you have reached into a, a section of statute way down there and gotten a skirt around, found a skirt around our charter and I think that is a philosophy of the means justify the ends and even though I want the outcome, want it, two weeks ago, the outcome of hiring them, I don't think that this is the way the Reno City Council and our government should be operating in ignorance of our charter.
Okay, that...
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, for the record, we wanted to place in the record, there is not being, ignoring the city charter, there are two statutory provisions and more than that actually, that give the city attorney its power. The statute that was just referred to by the council member does relate to hiring a special counsel or if there's a conflict and that is a separate statute than the one we're utilizing to, for the city attorney to hire. In addition, under the charter, the city attorney has the power to hire assistants as he deems necessary to fulfill his duties of office. If the city council provides to our office a full labor relations legal work to do, we have to perform, we have to provide assistance and get services to the city of Reno, that has to be done immediately to take care of pending litigation.
Ms. Sheevy, you have something?
All right, so wait, just to clarify, Tracy, you're saying if, if something comes before us legally, that you have to immediately act upon this, correct?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney, what I'm saying is there is pending litigation in the queue now.
Sure, so I get that.
And that is what we're speaking to address.
I get that, so that's the ARBAC, are we talking about the ARBAC?
There's more than that.
Markey ARBAC and all that?
Yes, that is one that is before you in a few minutes, yes.
Okay, so what I want to, what I want to point out, because this, this bothers me a lot, in light of the city's financial situation and what we did here yesterday and we cut all these important programs and things going along here, there was a letter and it, it basically says, and it's from Human Resources, from Renee Rundges, and it says, "Dear Mr. Kegel enclosed, please find a check in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars for a cancellation fee for the above referenced matter pursuant to your letter of May twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, the city regrets this cancellation, but it's due to a city council action of last week." Okay, so we, we just write checks for twelve thousand dollars and you guys should have represented us in, in this matter and you're basically saying it was because of council's action of last week when Fisher and Phillips were not, were, were not the, the attorney in this matter and I, I think...
I, I, I don't know what you're referring to, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to refer that over to Ms. Rundges.
Well, I'm sure Ms. Rundges does.
Ms. Rundges, would you?
I, I'm just saying that I don't think that what you guys are saying is, is quite honest or we're getting a full picture and we're talking about finances and how we just spend money here and you're talking about representing us, well, no one represented us in this matter and just wrote a check for it.
Renee Rundges, Director of Human Resources, Councilmember Sheevy, the council action that was referred to in the email that you quoted was the council action of not continuing the contract with Fisher and Phillips, that is accurate. There is, was also a general discussion by the council during that, that item that talked about... by the council during that item that talked about hiring outside labor, or outside legal counsel, and the council wanted to have that reexamined. And so that was the reason for stating that in the email. The arbitration that was being canceled had eight grievances. Not one, eight. It was scheduled at the end of July, next week, and the contract for that arbitration was with Marquee ARBAK Houghing. And that labor, or that contract expired June 30 of 2014. There were a few hundred dollars left on the not-to- exceed to spend, and not enough to cover the arbitration, but the arbitration was in July at any rate. So that was why the city felt it needed to cancel the arbitration and reschedule for a future time.
Okay, wow. That's all I can say.
Mr. Mayor?
I just...
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Sheevy's got the floor.
I just want to, I just want to point out, we are at a half a million dollars for these contracts, and we have, we still have, how many out? Seven? Seven? Do we have seven? So, I mean, do the math, 3.5 million on seven labor contracts?
With hundreds of millions at stake.
Potentially, potentially it could be. But, and you could spend 3 million on them. How much do you want to spend? How much, how far do you guys want to go?
I want to go to the point, I want to go to the point of getting these contracts to a sustainable level for the future of our city. In two years, every report shows if we don't get these labor contracts in line, this city is in the red, fully in the red. So we need to get a handle.
And it could go like that already, with you wanting to spend 3 million dollars on attorneys.
So let's lay down for them.
So, that's not about what it is at all, Dwight. I'm not saying that at all.
You don't want proper representation.
There has to be concessions. No. Let me tell you something. We wanted to sit down, talk about it, have concessions. They know that, we know that.
They know exactly what they're doing. They do. I know.
And that's where I think you're wrong. You've got to sit down and work with them.
Okay, let's, let's...
And if you can't get there, you can't get there. Then you bring them back. But this is, this is just games.
Okay. Let's wait one minute. I'm going to recognize Mr. Cadlec, then I'm coming back and recognize Mr. Klinger.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Cadlec, City Attorney, one thing I do want to do is I want to recognize Tracy Chase, Mark Donegan, and Ann Wilkinson for working well into the night to prepare that motion to set aside the injunction. They did it to protect the interests of the city. I commend all three of them for doing that, and I just wanted the council to recognize that. I appreciate all three of them on the record, everything they did for this city. Thank you.
And to turn it around fast, they knew they, I mean...
Okay.
Kudos.
Mr. Klinger.
Mr. Mayor and council, I just, I want to communicate to the council, as well as to the employee groups, that if this item is in fact approved by council today, that we are, that I am still more than willing to sit down with the labor groups without the attorney there, and try and reach an agreement with the labor groups. I just, I want the council to understand that, and I want the labor groups to hear that as well, that this action today does not preclude us from sitting down with them and negotiating without the attorneys present.
And I want to clarify that they have asked me to sit down, but then the council won, so I haven't sat down with them and talked to them yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city attorney to move forward with a contract with Fisher and Phillips with, do we want to put the caps in there, Mr. Cadlec? With the caps that were outlined earlier?
No, let's not put the caps.
It's either that or they bring them back. It's either that or we bring them back. It's just, so how do you want me to reference those? Because you didn't have them in front of you.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I'll turn it over to the city attorney in just a moment. As a clarification, is part of your motion for our office to move forward with a transition plan for us to take in, to create an in-house labor relations program with HR and our office?
Absolutely.
Based upon the hiring? That's my question. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Cadlec.
Just, and again, it is, it is a total of 300,000, plus some expenses, plus some 3,000 a day, if they go beyond what they believe. They believe they have set periods of time that'll be concluded, but give us the authority to, let's say 300,000 total, and we will work it out with them from there.
And then bring it back to us for, to update us?
Absolutely. It'll not exceed 300,000 for all of the things they're going to do, and we will work with them on that, and I feel comfortable that they will accept that. I have their email, and we will work with them, and we will come back, and it is capped at 300,000 to cover the various things that are set forth that they're doing right now.
Okay, so let me clarify my motion, then. As Tracy mentioned, it's to move forward with the transition plan, including contracting with Fisher and Phillips with a max contract of 300,000 at this time?
That's correct. Together with a, looking into the ability to HR to hire a labor relations representative, as well as the city attorney's office, an attorney to specialize in labors. Again, we realize that's not going to happen tomorrow.
Correct.
That's going to be a long-term plan, but it's for the best interests of this city to start planning for the future. I agree with Councilwoman Jordan. It's not just today. You've got to start looking down the road.
Absolutely.
The money's just not there anymore.
That's my motion.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Just really quickly, so Mr. Cadlec, or Andrew Klinger, could you clarify how much money that we've spent on, if you're going to allocate this 300,000?
The 300,000 for the current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year 15, is currently in the human resources budget. So there's 300,000 for outside counsel in the human resources budget. We would have to bring back a budget augmentation to council to move that from HR and place it in the city attorney's office. In addition to that, if you authorize this today, we would hire a labor relations manager in the HR department. Now, we had funding included in the budget for a senior management analyst position, but I believe the salary for that is less than what we would need for the labor relations manager. So there would be an augmentation there, and I don't know if Renee or Robert know what that number is, but there's going to have to be an add in HR for that piece. So the outside counsel funds would move to the city attorney's office, and then there's a smaller amount that'd have to be placed in HR for the labor relations manager position. And then the vacant, there's two vacant positions in the city attorney's office, and one of those would be used for bringing in an attorney with labor experience into the city attorney's office. So it's really, there's sort of three, three pieces to it.
And again, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we utilized our vacant positions to try to create a little bit of savings too, because obviously it will take us a little bit of time to hire an attorney. So there will be some minimal savings, you know, as a guest, maybe 20,000. And if our budget does come out with that savings in the fall, we can come back to you and have you move that to the outside counsel line.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to summarize my understanding that the city attorney believes authority rests in the charter provision, that these attorneys will operate as, quote, assistants, under the language of that charter, and that NRS 41.0344 is to be read separate apart from NRS 41.0338, and the, that general section of 41 related to legal representation, because that's my understanding of how they are thinking that this is, passes legal muster. So I disagree, and I won't be supporting this, but I will ask my colleagues, whose super minority rights I've been representing here today, to bring back as an L item, a narrowly tailored retention of Fisher, and I can't remember their other name. You have the rights under our rules of procedure, because you prevailed to bring that back. Looks like the majority, if they do hire them, will be hiring them under, my reading, is very questionable circumstances, which may not be withheld. So I would ask one of you to please bring forward an L item. I think it would be preferential to hire them under those circumstances, and much better for the city's long-term interests. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick discussion item. Just for clarification, this 300,000 is capped, and we will no longer see Fisher and Phillips brought to the city council for an extra amended item for further, for more charges in the future. Is that what we're saying?
I don't think you can ever make that guarantee.
Well, the caps that he just put out there.
It depends on where we're at in negotiations.
The caps that you just said, you said that you're going to work out Fisher and Phillips for 300,000, they'll be able to do all the work that you're asking them to do, and that with the cap on there. Is that correct?
John Cadlec, City Attorney, that is going to be what the offer is going to be to them. And they have said that they are willing to take the remainder on if it goes over as pro bono on behalf of the city. They are very interested, because what is important to remember here is the decision of Judge Stiglitz, which, in a way, all seven of this council, the mayor and council, should be concerned about, because it took away your power to determine how you allocate the city's money that comes from the city taxpayers. That's now being decided by the courts, how you can allocate your money. If you want to go out and spend all your money on parks and have five firefighters and seven police officers...
Mr. Cadlec, I agree with you. I was asking for clarification on the caps.
That, no, that's...
So they'll be able to come back and ask for some more?
That's what we're going to offer them, is 300,000 total. That's it, and everything beyond that is pro bono. And if they won't accept that, then we'll have to come back. But that's going to be my offer to them.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And we've, Ms. Chase and I spoke with Mr., I never pronounce his name, Riccardi, and that, so we believe that's what it is. There's an email to that, you know, and we will, that's what it's going to be, and that's, I'm putting my reputation on the line, too. And so, and I've worked real hard for the last seven-plus years to build this office up to a good office, and leave it to my successors, a good office. So I'm putting my rep on the line as well.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote for three.
Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. For the record, the Financial Advisory Board is a citizen board that reviews current policies and procedures relating to city finances and makes recommendations for improving the city's financial condition. The advisory board consists of 11 members who are appointed by you, the council. Tila Hammond, the Chair of the Financial Advisory Board, is here to present the annual report for the city council's approval, as required by Reno Municipal Code 2.08.380.
Hello, nice to see you all again today. You should have before you...
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tila Hammond, Chair of the Financial Advisory Board. You should have before you our summary of what we worked on this past fiscal year. Some of those items are always ongoing, but what I did want to point out, that we kind of took on addition to that, was reviewing the city's revised investment policy, the various fund policies, the capital assets policies, and providing recommendations to those and getting those approved. We also this year met with the City of Reno Charter Committee, and we will be working with them into this next fiscal year, reviewing the financial aspects of the city's current charter, and making possible recommendations for changes or revisions if necessary. We reviewed the city's CAFR for the 1213 year in great detail, accepted that report, and as I presented to you last month and yesterday, we also reviewed the 1415 budget, and our motion included our concerns that I've already shared with you on that. In terms of our work plan for the next fiscal year, most of these items continue to stay the same, except we did add item number 14, which was a suggestion from a public member attending our meetings, which was that we review the labor union contracts for their fiscal implications, possibly before they get finalized, and then our work with the charter committee. So unless there's anything you guys would like to add to our work plan, we would ask for a motion to approve our work plan and our summary from last year.
Any questions?
Well, I have one point. I do appreciate the work that you all do. You came before us when we were doing our budget adoption, and, you know, I didn't go with your recommendation, but I did appreciate, or we didn't, I appreciate, the medium-term bond obligations. Those are causing me grief. I don't think the last one went before your board for consideration. That was for this computer program, because I didn't see a recommendation on that. But I have the feeling that there, we're kind of like someone who's, you know, maybe have poor credit score, lost their house, you know, has garnished wages, and these medium-term obligations are like credit cards that we're just getting here and there, because they reduce the flexibility going forward, you know, and we have them for copiers, the golf carts, computer programs. Have those come to your attention? Have you guys had a broad discussion on those?
We review, we review the bonds in general every month, and then I believe it's bond proposals in excess of a million. A million come before our board for, I don't know if it's approval, but, but for our recommendations and our comments on that.
Well, if they're above a million, you're missing a number of them, because we're getting some under a million. The, I think the golf carts were 900,000 or so on. So maybe we could lift that to, you know, I don't know if we have any more medium-term obligations coming down the pipeline. I certainly hope not. But I'd sure like to see you looking at any medium-term obligations.
And we could make that change today. So that wouldn't be a problem. We'd be happy to look at that. So any and all obligation, okay. Any other suggestions for us?
One of the questions I had, and I know it was posed at the last FAB meeting, was whether or not a representative or the FAB could be privy to some of the ongoing labor negotiations.
Correct. And I think the staff is supposed to be looking into that, on whether or not we could do that. I don't know.
We don't have an answer. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance. At this point, we don't have an answer on how that would work. It probably depends each one about how the, what our ground rules are for each of the groups, and what we can and cannot discuss with them. So we have it under review, and we'll be getting back to the FAB, probably at their next meeting.
I just think having their eyes on those would be very helpful, given their financial expertise. Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion for approval.
Public comment.
I don't have a public comment card from you.
No.
You come on up, and you can fill one out later.
I'm sorry.
No problem. As we get older, we forget things.
I'm getting much older, yes.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Jeff Church, a citizen of Reno, for the record. I just wanted to comment, or actually ask for clarification on three issues. Perhaps Ms. Hammond could do that. Number one, she just mentioned the fact that hopefully they would be able to review labor contracts prior to ratification, would do no good afterwards. And because I guess we don't have any NABS anymore, that would be essentially a public forum for the public as well, to have the opportunity to go over and offer their input. One of the things we did talk about at the FABs, and I've attended many of them as a concerned citizen, as she was mentioning, and maybe they can clarify, under NRS 288153, the city has to put the financial impact of each contract. And I think admittedly, they've been lowballing those. They've been going with the very lowest common denominator. There's a organization or accounting firm, Ong and Associates, that has done a study and recommended how those are reported. And I think we're in agreement, at least from my attending those FABs, that we're not going to lowball it. We're going to include all costs as per that Ong and Associate study, including the retirement benefits that I myself draw. And finally, my understanding is that they have asked for some legal opinions on some things that they have not received yet. So I know the city attorney is extremely busy, but I would hope that they would get legal opinions expeditiously on those aspects that they've asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. No other public comment. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item J3.
Robert Chisel, again, for the record, Director of Finance and Administration. This item relates to the Reno Administrators and Professionals Association Professional Unit. As required by NRS 288200, staff will present the fact-finding report, and the council will have a discussion on that fact-finding report without going into details of the fact-finding report, very similar to what we did at the last council meeting. Just to give you a little background, in 2013, the City of Reno and the REPG Pro commenced negotiations for a successor bargaining agreement. When it became apparent that the parties were at impasse in negotiations and would not reach an agreement, the parties proceeded to mediation with a federal mediator. And were unsuccessful in reaching agreement, Reno and REPG Pro then submitted the dispute to FactFinder pursuant to... and R E P G Pro then submitted the dispute to Fact Finder pursuant to NRS 288 also. The parties agreed to the fact finding would be non-binding. The parties presented their issues to Fact Finder on March 27th and 28th of this year. The association's proposal was to continue the existing language in benefit of the collective bargaining agreements with no changes, exclusive of the sunsets. The city made six proposals. One was the elimination of retiree benefits for new employees, otherwise to tiering. The financial impact to the city, if the proposed changes are not implemented, is a projected increase in OPEV of approximately three and a half million dollars. Two, clarification that OPEV benefits are available only through service to the City of Reno. We believe this is just clarification of the existing contract and therefore there would be no financial impact, as that is what we believe is already in the contract. Third was reduction of dependent healthcare coverage by the city from fifty-five to fifty percent, similar to what other groups have. This is estimated to be forty thousand dollars a year savings per year, if implemented. Four was changing the wage scale from five steps to three steps for new employees. Reducing the wage scale from five to three steps for new hires cannot be determined of fiscal impact, as it would only apply to new hires and would have no immediate impact. This is to cure the issue of compaction with the, their supervisors. Fifth was a temporary reduction of the deferred comp match from five percent to two and a half percent. This would equate to approximately eighty thousand dollars per year. And the sixth proposal was permanently reducing wages by one percent for all employees represented by the association. This one percent reduction would be approximately forty-two thousand dollars per year with additional savings related to purse. The Fact Finder, Ross Runkel, prepared a final report of the findings and recommendation. The report is attached to your staff report. The Fact Finder agreed with the city's recommendations. The next step is to schedule a meeting with R E P G Pro to discuss the Fact Finder report and see if an agreement can be reached. So.
Any discussion, any questions? Chair, entertain a motion.
Just to say that we got it? I mean, that's.
Well, this is, again, this is that weird, well, I shouldn't say weird, it's unusual law that says we're supposed to have a discussion of the proposals and the financial impact, which I kind of went through. And you're supposed to discuss it, but without going into detail. So I, I would, I would.
I would suggest you go to his office and talk to him about it.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. A discussion could be that you don't have any questions at that point in time. If you have questions, you're certainly willing to discuss those or ask questions of staff. If you have any discussion between one another, you're welcome to do that as well. That's what discussion pertains to in the law.
But I can go to his office and ask him questions later if I want to.
Yeah, unfortunately, this law says you have to have the discussion on the record.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, I have read the fact finding report. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, please. If you're going to have a discussion, I don't want to.
I have read the fact finding report, and I mentioned the results of the work that Fisher Phillips did for us previously. And I, I look forward to moving this on to the next step and, and finding a common, you know, reaching agreement with this group. That does such important work for our city.
Mr. Delgado, did you have anything?
I don't accept the, do we just make a motion to accept the staff report?
Okay. Have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J four.
Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you an amendment to the contract with Marquis Arbach Coffing, or commonly known as the MAC Law Firm, for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for a total contract amount, cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Council approved the original contract in January of 2013. As I mentioned previously, that contract expired June 30th of 2014. The city has currently thirteen grievances slated for arbitration. And the staff requests that the council approve the amendment not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for a total contract cost of one hundred and fifty thousand.
So I, I guess, I, just really quickly, I would just like to ask that if, in the future, if there are any arbitrations that are going to be this incredibly costly, I mean, this is a lot of money, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars that we canceled on that, and I know we're going to retain this group to represent us in the grievances, that, I don't know if you have to call an emergency meeting or what you have to do or whatever, just because it's so incredibly costly whenever you do cancel them.
Councilmember Sheevy, I do empathize with your feeling. Staff had the same concerns. One of the challenges was just the, the timing issue. There was no guarantee that the council would approve this contract.
But we could have had it at the last council meeting. That, I guess that's my, my only issue is that if you need clarification right away, Andrew, that we could direct you to get that. So, I mean, it's very expensive.
So staff will try to be more vigilant with that in the future.
Chair, entertain a motion for approval.
Aye.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record. I am here for ratification of the Fisher and Phillips contract. I am here to say we have incorrectly monitored the billings for Fisher and Phillips, resulting in overspending of this contract. Several factors led to this issue. The renewal was originally scheduled for early June, however, circumstances delayed it until late June. During June, we had approximately eighty thousand dollars worth of billings, primarily the result of the lawsuit. Also, staff incorrectly tracked approximately fifty-five thousand dollars worth of billings as not part of the contract for a personnel issue that was separate from negotiations and was previously discussed from council. These actions by our limited staff of three human resource personnel was not acceptable. Corrective action and appropriate action has occurred within the department to rectify this issue. We have also taken steps to rectify the problem and to ensure it doesn't happen again in the future. Staff is now monitoring all contracts with new procedures. For outside services such as legal, weekly timesheets are being requested to track dollars more closely and will be part of a weekly management review.
That was going to be my question is, well, it sounds to me like there's some admitted oversights within our own staff, but from the attorney side, have we gotten agreement that they will submit the weekly timesheets? Because, because I know how attorneys will sometimes.
Yes.
Build their hours up for a month and then put them all in and then.
That's normally how it was occurring, which is.
On a monthly basis, and now we're backing it up and saying, can you give us a weekly?
Correct.
Ticker. Okay. And they've agreed to that?
Yes.
And they, Mr. Catholic.
Well, they're separate. Their office is handling their contracts. This would be anything that would be coming through the city manager's office.
But I think the same would apply. I mean, we still need to have a more.
That, so I, I don't want to speak for them.
Well, they got caps now.
Yes, Tracy.
But we still want an, we want an update. So we kind of, you can see when we're getting close to that cap.
Absolutely. Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We will build into the contract a request for weekly timesheets. And the weekly timesheets that Mr. Chisel is referring to would be for the MAC contract as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess, you know, that's, that's my concern, is this, this made up term ratification that doesn't exist in our financial policies or RMC. You know, it's, it's a good term, but it's a good term for procurement irregularities, which there's been too many of. And they're not been limited to the city attorneys. There was the Advantage one, one that I discovered, you know, going, asking some questions that a constituent raised to me. There was Aerotech, right? There was ADP, and now there's this. So we've had four ratifications, really in fiscal year 2013. Isn't that correct?
I, I don't believe the ADP contract is one. Aerotech was one. The Advantage one, I don't, I don't remember that being one. The, the only one was, that I remember is the Aerotech one.
No, the Advantage was where both legal and PD had written twenty-five thousand dollars or more.
Oh, that is correct. That was one, yes.
Okay. So, so let's talk about this. You know, Andrew, Mr. Klinger, you made a comment yesterday about how you have something to do, but you just don't have the resources to get there. You know, I can't remember what it was, but I, I, there's a lot of cracks showing through, the, the, the resource deficiencies in our organization. And procurement definitely seems to be one. And, and so I'm, I'm happy with your statement, Mr. Chisel, but I feel I need to see a little bit more. I read the accounts payable every, before every meeting. I actually sent Mr. Klinger an email on Marquis Arbach because I didn't recall that contract and, and where we were at on that one. And I'm wondering if maybe on the accounts payable, which is a communication to us that we look at for our preparation for these meetings, you could run some running tallies for different consultant contracts or, or something. Let us know what percentage completion on some of these. I never see any problems with Public Works, and they run out a lot of money on their engineering contracts, but those go to bid. And I think there's a little bit more process oriented there. How, how are we going to do this on some of the consulting and professional services that are generally sole sourced?
Robert Chisel, again, for the record. To be honest, the issue is, there is a lack of resources. We have nobody that is assigned to do purchasing or contract management. We have a part-time person we share with the county that does purchasing and contracts for the City of Reno. Most of it is allocated out, decentralized to the departments to handle it on their own. And that is how we're handling it with the reduced resources we have in the city. For human resources and for the other areas, we are trying to monitor it as best we can in finance. As you mentioned, for Public Works, we do set up contracts and set it up as monitoring and accounts payable. The issue with that is, it's not until the bills come in that we know where we are with the spending. So that's one of the issues we were trying to get ahead of with the timesheets here. We are only catching it after the bills come in. So we're trying to get a little ahead of it with the issue we had here. We do monitor by the contracts on, in finance, when the bills come in, but it, it is only, it is a manual process. We don't have a system that does that.
Which I wonder, which, with like the Fisher Phillips, they knew, I suppose they knew that their contract was, what their contract provisions were and when it was going to come before us. Is there any way that we can put some more, and I know they're going to do the weekly timesheet, but is there any way that we can put some onus on them to notify us, particularly when these contract deadlines are approaching, and something like the Supreme, you know, the Supreme Court issue comes up in the lawsuit, having defend that comes up. And they know, they know that something's going to have to be ramped up and there's going to be a significant amount of hours and, and resources expended. I just wonder if there's a way that we can put more onus on them to say, hey, guess what? Your contract's almost up. We're getting geared up to help you in this. We're going to, we're going to reach a crossroads here and, and just to alert us to something that's on the horizon.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We will be happy to draft a contract provision that indicates if there's going to be more than a percentage of the contract going to be utilized in the next month, or they think they're within thirty days of a not take seat limit, that they have to provide us written notice thereof. We can draft that for consulting agreements?
Yeah, and, and an alert, kind of, because they know. It's just like any lawyer that knows that a trial is coming up. They alert the client to, and oftentimes to get a trial retainer because they know that all of a sudden their, their resources are going to ramp up significantly. So I kind of wonder if we can do the same with Fisher, any of our outside legal counsel, when they see something like this appeal to the Supreme Court, et cetera, that be prepared, we're going to have to ramp up and it's going to, you know.
Certainly. And that would be appropriate for all consulting type of agreements.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. And, and also to add to that, because, and I, I think that's the provision is verbal representations. I mean, staff needs to not be making any representations that the contract will follow. They, you know, on, out of the side, side kind of conversations on the limits. And I think that needs to be a part of a overall project contract management for people who are the project leads on, on these things. And I don't know if it's a training issue or, or what, but it, it is a real problem.
It can be set up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First, Mr. Chisel, I appreciate the, the statement you made, to come and step up and just say, take ownership of it. That really means a lot, especially with, with the case and the tension of everything that's going on. So I really appreciate that. I understand you've put in a lot of, a lot of gates now in order to keep that from happening. And I understand now we have caps in place to keep from, hopefully keeping that from over being overspent. Seems like we're going to be asking a lot of them to watch their money as well, which I think they should just do that as part of their, their business anyways, and trying to retain us as a client. So essentially, at the end of this, after, I'm assuming that we will approve this, we're going to now be giving them about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and, and seventy-four dollars, so nearly eight hundred thousand. I just hope the rest of the council understands that this is quite expensive and it seems like we're putting in a lot of, a lot of gates and everything else in order for these guys to be upfront with us and what they're trying to do. And I don't really know what they're, if, if we're really getting what our money's worth. Sounds like these guys have a, their own agenda as well and milking the heck out of the city. So I hope you guys understand what we're doing. And again, I just appreciate the candidness and being straight up with us, Mr. Chisel.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chisel. So I just want to clarify. So that's close to eight hundred thousand dollars. And the one thing I do want to let staff know is that, you know, Tracy, you had mentioned something at the end of the council meeting last time, something that we had some sort of outstanding billings. Remember, you said there were some? So I kind of thought, well, maybe it's, you know, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, not a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so I just hope that staff wasn't so presumptuous to think that they have the votes to continue spending and to write a blank check like Mr. Delgado said. I, I think this is just going to be disastrous, and I know we can agree to disagree. I didn't sign a lot of those contracts. And so I, I think at this point, it's, it's one of those things where we are going to have to agree to disagree. But I just think we can end up spending, you know, millions on this. We can. And I think that Councilman Delgado and I have been sitting down, speaking with these groups, and I think it's been very positive. It's no different how, you know, you said you wanted to extend an olive branch out to, what was it, Truckee Meadows Fire? Right? It's the same sort of concept. So.
I don't think one is, to the exception of the other. I think to not take parallel paths of both extending the opportunity to sit down and try to come to a resolution while at the same time offering our taxpayers the, the expertise in the event that's not successful. I certainly, absolutely will sit down and discuss and hope that we can come to a, an agreement with any group at any, any time.
And I think that needs to be the message. And that's a positive one.
Absolutely, absolutely. This is not meant to be.
You know, right. There you go.
To me, I think this is using both lanes of the freeway. And, and my fear is by, by closing off one lane that we may very well need to access is doing a disservice to the, to our community and our long-term objectives of getting these long-term contracts in line.
And I don't look at it that way. I think at any time, you know, if it doesn't work out, we can bring them back. But right now.
Yeah, but then you've, then you've lost, you've lost the, the expertise and the buildup and the experience and the, you know, the, all of the months it has taken. I mean, we've been with Fisher and Phillips for over a year now and have two very successful fact finding meetings.
But fact finding is fact finding.
Yes, fact finding is fact finding, but it's part of the process. And to try to truncate that now and start over.
You could lose an arbitration.
Is not only significantly expensive, now you have to bring someone else up to speed. And, and I think you're really, you're, you're really hampering the city's ability to, to have continuity and a successful long-term solution to these very significant issues. So, but I agree. I would love to sit down and chat.
I'm positive and hopeful. I think we can get there.
I, I hope we can too.
Yeah, I do. I think we can absolutely get there without spending this kind of money. So I think, like we asked, Oscar and I asked, let's, you know, sit down, let's talk about it. And, you know, bringing it back, it obviously proves that that's not the direction we're going to take.
Okay, we have them, item J five. I need a motion. Have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote five, two. Six, no.
Five, two.
Five, two. That's what I thought. All right. Mr. Church, I overlooked you a minute ago. Do you have any, okay.
Yes, six, seven.
Six, seven?
Yes, that's true.
Yes, that's true.
That's right. Yep.
And, and I would be interested in hearing from staff what the reading on the existing contract is when they overextend. They work at their own risk.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. One reason why we put it on the record last time is to make council aware that staff was coordinating with them to provide legal services. Our office did not have the amount of the contract, and I don't think anyone did, that it was exceeded to this level because the service were needed in the exigent circumstance. Also, so you know, this is a six, seven vote. What the ramifications or result would be is the law firm could make a claim against the city for the reasonable value of the services delivered, and then our office will look at that claim and tell you whether or not, you know, the ramifications of that claim are prevailing or not.
Okay.
So at that point in time, what vote does it take to settle that claim?
The claim itself would come to council at this amount, and settlement of a claim is different than approval of a legal agreement. Settlement of a claim would be a majority of council.
Okay. Thank you.
And whether or not you're able to represent on that issue, I think would be also at issue.
We can look into that. I don't see a problem off the top of my head.
I would, well, I'd like another motion, and I'd like to ask, since we have this obligation that we take care of this, and I would hope that somebody would come along and let's not have a lawsuit and all this other stuff. You're right. Would one of you bring up a reconsideration? I would appreciate it if both of you bring up a reconsideration. We got a bill to pay, and we ought to pay it. They've already spent this time and labor and stuff.
But that wasn't what we agreed to.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, John Cavick, City Attorney. Let me meet with Mr. Klinger, Ms. Chase and I, and let us talk to the law firm and see if we can come to some sort of resolution of this matter. Give us, till the August 20th meeting, and let us see if we can work something out that'll be palatable for everybody. I understand where Councilman Sheevy's coming from. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Mayor. Let us try to talk to him and see if we can work something out and avoid litigation if humanly possible.
But this workout won't involve rolling these charges onto the contract that was just approved?
No.
Okay.
No, no. This is going to be a separate discussion between Fisher and Phillips and Mr. Klinger and Ms. Chase and I.
I do have a question on that. Of the 175, going back to the monthly billing versus the weekly billing, how much of the 175 did come in one, like, large bill?
I believe it was 80,000, but Mr. Chisel can verify that.
Well, there was actually several large bills that came in, in May, but the biggest one was for June. And actually, I'm not sure if we received it all. We just got the numbers. It was 77,000 for June, and that was related to the IAFF lawsuit.
Okay, so I agree. I think there is value in going back and discussing this with them in light of what I still believe, they should have known that the, their contract was soon coming to a decision, and yet they were ramping up. And I know we asked them. I know that they, you know, it was at our instruction, but kind of a get-ready folks kind of thing. So maybe there is some room to negotiate this down.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in having them go back and saying, now that we retained them again for another 300,000, that they go back and say, how can we play a little bit nice? So I'd wait for-
Okay, we'll let legal counsel do that. All right, let's go to item J6.
Before we start, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think, I think this item has a lot to it pending, more or less, what's going on with IAFF. And I wouldn't mind just taking some time and deferring this until we get a little more resolved back after our break. Because it's related to REMZA, which is so integral to our public safety, and we really don't know, more or less, what our numbers on the public safety are going to be until we resolve our, our layoff situation there. So I'd like to suggest that we do that.
I'd like to hear from staff before we-
What'd you say, Mr. Dor-
Just like to hear from staff on it before we, I mean, if there's any issues with the delay in it, or, I mean, I just want to hear what staff has to say and where we're at on this in the process.
Robert Chisel again for the record, Director of Finance and Administration. On March 12th of this year, council approved Resolution 7951 directing the Washoe County Health District to establish and maintain a regional emergency medical services oversight program. And we have representatives from the District Board of Health here also to answer any questions. This was based on presentations and discussions at the February 10th meeting, which was a joint meeting with the Reno City Council, Spark City Council, Washoe County Commission, and the Washoe County District Board of Health. This agreement that's in your staff report provides for the emergency medical oversight program and an advisory board under the District Board of Health to compile, analyze, evaluate, and recommend response performance standards and protocols, and to allow for the continuous improvement and optimization of the regional EMS system to ensure appropriate patient care. This agreement requires the participants to strive to implement the recommendations of this board or submit those recommendations to their governing bodies for review and possible action, if necessary and appropriate by the respective city managers. Again, this was discussed at the February 10th joint meeting. The resolution was adopted by council. It is separate from the REMZA contract. This is just the oversight of the EMS.
And this is something we all discussed back in February. They used to have an evergreen contract that we didn't have any say-so or oversight on, and now we do. And I, I really don't know of any reason to postpone this.
Well, I'll state my reasons. I'll state my reasons. Since, since we had our meeting back in January, talking about this framework, and since we've gone through the terrible situation of having to do those firefighter layoffs, and in particular, the 160 Lemon Drive police incident report that I read, it really crystallized to me how integrally linked our public safety response, the three-legged stool I hear a lot of, of our, our fire department and REMZA. And I have concern that this framework that we've been marching down is not getting us where we need to get, particularly at this time of our incredible vulnerabilities in the fire department. I guess another thing that crystallized for me was last meeting, we had the CAC agreement, you know, the homeless shelter, and how we have a direct relationship with the VOA, and they're telling us how many, you know, case managers, how many homeless clients the case managers see, and a lot of performance standards. And, and I feel that we are so at arm's length, and this oversight committee even puts us more at arm's length, with REMZA. I think the direct relationship with REMZA needs to be with our, with us, and not the Board of Health, an appointed body, which, you know, they have good people on there. They have a restaurant manager there, you know, and a restaurant owner, a doc, a physician. But it's a critical piece of our public safety response. And I think we need to take another look at this, wind it down, and make sure that, and I know you've made some steps on your protocols resulting from the 160 Lemon Drive, but I think we need to go a very heavy-lifting way in getting a direct relationship with REMZA, and a contractual relationship with REMZA on the services that they provide. And I'm prepared to go there, and I understand the implications of it also.
Well, if it does revert back to the evergreen, the health department would be completely in control.
Well, I'm prepared to have a workshop on what that means and what action we would do with the Board of Health role in general on this. So I'm willing to go-
Well, and if it rolls back to them, there's nothing else for us to talk about.
Well, if there is a Board of Health, or not a Board of Health.
No, we have a pointee on there. Mr. Dorch?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we've had this conversation multiple times over the last, oh geez, three years, trying to get to the agreement that was approved two months ago by the Health Board. And the joint bodies of the County Commission, City of Sparks and City of Reno, met at least four times on the issue, minimally four times. Our staffs met endlessly on it. And I think that this community, those three governing boards, and the board that has the authority in its entirety, the Health Board, have taken all of the caution and public input into consideration. And I believe that we do need to move forward. And I'm not sure that whatever action we're taking on our own contracts has any appropriate application to this action today.
Mr. Mayor, I'm addressing my comments primarily to those will be sitting in these seats in December. What's been going on in our region in these critical public safety services is not working. There is heavy lifting to be done, and we'll be dealing with that after December. And I think this is a step that we need to take and examine full force to start thinking about doing things differently. I believe that very seriously. I know the ramifications of where we're going on this, where, where I'm suggesting we go, but I feel it is where we do need to go with the changed landscape of our public safety capabilities. I believe in regionalization and regional efficiencies, but when I look at the call numbers, and I think they were up here the other day, at least our police department had them, and you see the magnitude of how Reno experiences the volumes that we have. We're regional partners with Washoe County and Sparks, but we stand alone in the, just the sheer volume of demands placed upon our services. And so I would ask that we not take action on this and ask our manager to have a workshop, say in September or October, to move forward with a different and new approach.
What actions been taken by Sparks and Washoe County thus far?
Randall Todd with the Washoe County Health District for the record. The City of Sparks approved this interlocal agreement, I believe, yesterday. The District Board of Health, as you know, has taken action to approve this. The Washoe County Board of Commissioners has also approved it. So that leaves us only with the Reno City Council and the Truckee Meadows Board of Fire Commissioners, which is composed of the same individuals who took action as county commissioners to approve it already. So we're not anticipating that they would not. Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, the, the franchise agreement you referred to as having been evergreen, that has been changed, and it is no longer evergreen. So that took effect on July 1. One of the problems that had been experienced not only by people on this board who had questions about EMS performance, but that was true on the Spark City Council, it was true on our District Board of Health as well. Questions that came up that related to EMS performance in general could not be answered because the interlocal agreement under which we were operating allowed us only oversight of the franchise, no other aspects of the EMS system. So what this really does is it gives you, or gives us, the ability to have data on all aspects of the EMS system. It allows us to perform analysis of those data and to give feedback to the respective governing boards through appropriate channels. The, to give you one example, City of Sparks didn't want to wait for the interlocal agreement to be signed. Their fire chief already gave us historical data, and we already started performing specialized analyses of that data to answer questions that their fire chief had. So this is really, doesn't have to do with the franchise. It has to do with big-picture EMS issues that we'll be able to, to do a better job of overseeing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may,
Ms. Zadri?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I appreciate what the Board of Health has done, and I do think it was a jump in getting rid of the evergreen clause. I think we need to go further. And I'll remind my colleagues, Councilmember Sheevy and Councilmember Delgado, the precedent action on this, you both opposed it. So I think supporting what I'm advocating here would be consistent with that previous position.
Ms. Zadri, you want to give me a motion?
I think that this is the absolute next responsible step. I move that we do move forward with creating the oversight program.
Do I have a second?
You say you're approving the interlocal agreement?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Four, three? Four, three.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment on that. It's, this is, this is an agreement that we all agreed to with the county and the City of Sparks.
Yep.
In a joint meeting, and it's the process we all agreed to moving forward. We're just finalizing it.
That's right. Okay. Item K1, Access Advisory Committee. Who's, who's on the Access Advisory Committee?
It's me. Move to appoint Caitlin, please. And just as, as a point of discussion, she is entirely enthusiastic about this and has handicaps that none of us would ever even want to consider dealing with. And she's coming forward to serve on this committee.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
And then for reappointment.
For-
For the-
Okay, we took a vote and everything. So she's reappointed.
She's a new appointment.
Oh.
But the reappointment of the other members as well.
Okay. Now we got that and a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item K, City Arts and Culture Commission.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to reappoint Megan Burner and Sharon Honig Bear.
Okay, second. Do I have a second?
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. K1C, Recreation Parks and Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Jaime Edrosa.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Zadri, K2.
Mr. Mayor, I've had a conflict for the last several months with another committee that I chair for the Health Board time period. So I am recommending that we appoint Ms. Jordan to fulfill my term on the Health Board.
Okay. You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of future agenda items.
Oh, excuse me. I'd like clarification on that appointment. And I voted in the, what are our rules of how long that appointment lasts for? Because my understanding is that that is one of the ones where the appointments last until the person severs their appointment in office. And so she would be on then until 2016, not filling out Councilmember Zadri's appointment. So I would like clarification on that from the city clerk, please.
So I think they're two-year terms, though.
No, it's co-terminous. So you, so that puts you on through 2016, and I'm not prepared to make, I don't think that's right. I think the new council needs to make that appointment when they come on. So I'm going to call for reconsideration of that.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion for reconsideration. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Die for the, die for the lack of a second.
So the decision is then she gets to sit on that board until 2016. So when we convene, when we can convene, when we convene in November with the new, with the new council, the Board of Health appointment of us has been made to Councilmember Jordan. I think the better approach would be to allow one of the other two members who are terming out to have that appointment until November, and then in November, it goes among the seven who are there, and it would run co-terminous with them.
All right, we've already-
I think that is the fair, and that's why I'm making that motion and asking for a second.
But it died for a lack of a second, and so we're moving on. Identification of future agenda items?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Mine, mine is discussion and possible direction to staff to examine city practices, and that's small city, related to, quote, cooling off periods for former employees in regards to the period of time in which they must wait after concluding their service before entering into a business relationship with the city and/or representing other persons who have business before the city. My other one is discussion and possible direction to staff related to a moratorium in adopting any more planned unit developments within the city of Reno or sphere of influence pending a study and planning period of the city to understand how many- pending a study and planning period of the city to understand how many single-family residential lots are development-ready and the city's ability to provide services to those previously approved lots within, those previously, those lots within previously approved subdivisions and plan unit developments.
Okay, those are two agenda items.
Did everybody get that?
You got another?
That was very detailed. That was very thorough, though.
Well, the last time, there was a misinterpretation of what...
That was very thorough. Didn't make mine sound puny. I would like to, this is an offshoot of, actually, it was brought about during some of the budget discussions and meetings I had with Judge Pearson, as well as judges from the municipal court about potentially merging Justice Court and Unicourt. So I would like to direct staff to expend two or more hours to initiate the creation of a steering committee to discuss possible efficiencies within the Reno Municipal Court and possible merger with Reno Justice Court. I do understand that we've recently received a memo from some of the judges at Reno Municipal Court outlining why they believe this isn't a possibility or may not be a good idea, but I believe it's, there's value in bringing people together to discuss it. And this would include a representative from Reno Municipal Court, Reno Justice Court, someone from the city attorney's office, someone from the DA's office, an elected from the county, and an elected from Reno.
You want that all done next meeting?
At a minimum. No, this is, doesn't have to happen overnight. None of this is going to happen overnight.
Okay, so that's not for the next meeting?
No, it doesn't have to be for the next meeting. But just to convene the steering...
The item will show up.
The item will show up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay.
Oh, yes. Real quick, maybe this can come in the form of a memo. Just wanted to find out what's occurred at the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course after the fire that burned down all of our equipment and everything else at that warehouse. Got a few calls from residents, want to know what's now occurring after that.
Okay. Liaison reports?
Were the golf course cars in it?
Wait a minute.
Oh, seriously? Oh, I'm sorry, I was kind of joking.
Liaison reports? Ms. Brackus?
I don't have any.
Oh, oh, you know what? I do have one. The Urban Forestry Commission, in association with Art Town, had a tree walkabout event, I think it was on a Saturday. I didn't, I was unable to attend. Forty-two people attended to walk through the trees in Old Southwest. So that's very exciting news of, just shows the interest in our community for trees.
That's super. Mr. Delgado.
I have a second.
Mr. Dorch. Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, the only updates, two that I have, one from some feedback I got relative to water users that were concerned that Tama was releasing their personal information with regards to their name and address. I've gotten some feedback from the Reno Gazette Journal that their intent is not to do that, that they're looking at maybe just releasing neighborhood information as to where the most water use is and do a broader story. Of course, that could change, but to maybe give at least some comfort to some of those that were concerned about their names and addresses being published in list form.
Okay.
That's the feedback I'm getting on that. The other is, we are meeting tomorrow morning with RTC representatives to discuss the Southeast Connector and the 7.5 million and some of the legal questions on either side of the table.
So that's, okay. And staff's going to be with you on that when they meet? Okay. Ms. Adra, do you have any? Ms. Sheevy?
No, sir.
Reports of any professional conference meetings?
Take that off.
Resolution, resolution?
Resolution 7993. Resolution donating council donation funds to Sagebrush Soccer Lady Nomads Youth Through 16 Youth Soccer Team for travel and competition expenses to the national championship from Mayor Koschel, council members Brackus, Delgado, Dorch, Jordan, and Zadra, each for $1,000, for a total of $6,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there is a memo to council for the members who, on the council who are going to term out, your allocations are prorated. So the amount, Mr. Mayor, that is left in your prorated amount, and for both Councilwoman Zadra and for Councilman Dorch, is $924.66. So that is the balance of your, based on your action yesterday, to reduce your council funds to $2,500, that is the proportionate share that you have remaining in those accounts.
Well, since my wife started soccer in Reno many years ago, working with the YMCA, I'll be glad to, I think there's a difference, about $245?
Mr. Mayor, that'd be $226.26.
$226, I'll be glad to issue a check covering the shortfall of the $226.
That's not going to be your birthday present to your wife, is it?
No, no.
Because today's, today's her birthday, I understand.
Today, it's her birthday, but...
Oh, good.
She started soccer many, many years ago, going to the YMCA, and so I'll write you a check for that.
Mr. Mayor, I want to bring up something that I thought staff was going to bring up. There was some miscommunication. I was misunderstood by staff. They asked for clarification, and when we went around, it was either a personal check or from our discretionary. And in communication with my liaison, I said I was going to write a personal check. I wrote that personal check, sent it off, I think it was the weekend before last. So I will not be committing the $1,000. We'll make those modifications on the...
You already took care of the $1,000.
It was not $1,000 out of my personal resources, but I, but at the table, I said the commitment would be made. I echo Councilmember Jordan's, and it's embarrassing, but I have otherwise allocated those funds.
Okay, so we're going to be short some more funds.
That wouldn't provide it to be short. It would just be funding coming from a different source, so all we need to...
But it didn't, it wasn't $1,000.
Oh, it wasn't $1,000.
So if I know the difference, I'll make it up.
It's $900, Mayor.
That's all right, I'll make it up.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the motion...
$900. I have to check my checkbook.
If you would check, and then whatever the difference is, I'll write a check for it.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, the adoption of the resolution should reflect the changes.
Yes. So the motion, somebody give me a motion to... Do we need a motion?
Yeah. So are you going to write the city a check, or are you going to write...
I'll write the, I'll write the girls a check.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the amount's going to be for...
It depends on...
$1,200.
$4,773.98.
From the city.
From the city?
And then...
Okay, so I'll approve the resolution with that amount? Move to approve the resolution?
No, it's not $4,700, because Jenny's no longer part of that $1,000.
Right, that's why I dropped the $1,000.
Oh, dropped to that $3,000? Sorry.
No, because the number was $5,773.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So I dropped Jenny's $1,000 off, and the mayor's going to, so fourth...
Am I correct? Yeah.
So I need to, I need to write one for nine plus the $226, or whatever it is, right?
Hang on a second, what's the...
So that's the motion.
We'll give you a total.
You just give it to me, whatever it is.
What was the amount you had to weigh? That's not exactly right, because the amount is reduced only by the $924, or am I...
No, it's reduced by $1,000 from Jenny.
I got you. You're right.
It's been a hard day, I understand.
I thought, I thought we hired a...
I didn't feel as bad, I'm not CPA, it's all good.
All right. So you're, no, a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Where in the hell am I?
You are on L5.
L5.
Resolution number 7994. Resolution supporting the governor's program for the development of local veterans advisory commissions.
Who to adopt?
Motion made in the second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. L7, L8, we have somebody wish to speak on L8? Oh, he does not wish to speak. As a business owner in Midtown, I am in favor. City council should have final say and opportunity to discuss on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
That's the other item. We need to go to that item.
That's L8, isn't it?
Yeah. We did L6 and L7 earlier.
Okay. No, that's my...
That's L8.
Is that person here? Who's the person who left the comment card?
Christian.
Oh, okay. He was, he's the guy on soup. Yes. This is, and the earlier comment was related to this, this is about two things. This is about a vague provision we have in the code that says that the staff can decide if a non-conforming use can come into closer conformity to the standard. And it's really unclear what closer conformity means. And there's, there's been a couple cases in that. And it's also about the council having the authority to decide if a conforming use should change or alter. A conforming use is one, well, I guess the Wild Orchid example was mentioned before. It's a strip club in basically a zone that allows, not strip clubs, strip clubs just go into industrial zones. And so the question is, should that be able to expand? And I'm not going specific off of what happened there, because it was more of a sign, but should they be able to put a, I don't know, a church there? And the code says, no, they cannot put a church there. They have to, the non-conforming uses kind of have to stay set as they are. And if it's not allowed, they don't get add-on or permutate. But the code has a relief valve, because there may be reasons why the, you want a non-conforming use maybe to change in very rare circumstances. And in those rare circumstances, the code has always said it's by issuance of a special use permit by the city council, not the planning commission, the city council. That's how clear that code provision is, and wanted the city council to take the authority on these very rare exceptions. Well, at some point, the code said, oh, no, the administrator can make this judgment call if it comes into closer conformity. And the administrator, and I think we got a memo on drive-throughs, the drive-through, there's a couple drive-through banks. One is over at the corner of Arlington Avenue and California Avenue, the Wells Fargo there. Well, restaurants are allowed there, but drive-throughs aren't. But the drive-through got in there a long time ago. It has three tellers, you know, a window and a couple ATM drive-throughs. Well, under this interpretation that the council's making, when the Wells Fargo goes along a restaurant, say McDonald's, can go in there, have a drive-through window, one, because they're coming in closer to conformity to the zero, because drive-through windows aren't allowed. And so on every, that's just an example, and the code doesn't allow that. So the question is, if there is going to be that allowance to allow that drive-through to change, come into closer to conformity to zero, even though it's changing from a bank to a restaurant, that should be a decision of the city council rather than staff. And that's what I'm proposing, an initiation to the zoning ordinance related to that.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The city attorney's office has no objection to city council using its authority to change its code provisions. We would caution you, though, that the language that vague and arbitrary provisions, that our office has not issued an opinion nor has a court. So if you do direct staff, you may be careful in your motion not to affirm that you believe it's a vague or arbitrary provision without that being legally reviewed.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. I have faith in our staff. I don't know of anything they've done that they've changed on or done something on that has been something that has affected anything. So I don't support this right now, because I think we're getting into micromanagement.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I see Councilwoman Brackus' point. I think currently, the Midtown area, see these, a lot of these thriving new areas that are coming about. And it's to our recognition here at the council that we start seeing projects start to take place, that we kind of see what's going on, because they have impact on the neighborhoods directly. And to...
But I don't see any of them happening in there right now, do you?
Well, we've had two different folks come and say, state otherwise. And from the, young woman spoke earlier, and then we had the other person that said what. And so I see her point in the sense of how broad and vague this may be, and if she's able to get some other terms into place about what are some things that she may see as options without the so-called micromanaging, I think that there may be a window for us to kind of be, take a place in that conversation.
Could we get, I'm curious to know from the standpoint of the applicant or the developer, what the timelines and costs associated with the two scenarios are? And how many of these are you seeing now that would have, that would come to us?
Frederick, Community Development Director. Essentially, we have about four non-conformity provisions within that section of code, the 1808-502. We see probably one a month, probably about one a month. If there, if there was a requirement or a change in the, in the code to require special use permits going to either the planning commission or the city council, we're looking at a 65-day process, a bare minimum. And with the existing fees today, it's $2,500 for a special use permit.
And loss of time.
And a minimum of 65 days.
Mr. Turnier, follow-up to that. When you say you see one a month, how many of those are non-conforming to standards? How many are non-conforming to use?
I don't have that number.
Would you say the majority is non-conforming to standards? Say, my building is not within the setback or my height?
Well, we see, with reinvestment in downtown, we see a lot of different things. Say, a parking lot that isn't paved, you know, say, people parking on gravel.
Is that a standard or a use?
We, what, the standards?
Yeah, parking lot not paved.
Parking lots, standards. We see that. From a use standpoint, we had the US Bank building that was brought up as an example previously, that, you know, the US Bank is still in existence. They still have a right to use those drive-throughs that they have on that place. They've just decided to do something different with, with the site.
And closer conformity, say in that example, in the Arlington and California Avenue one is, you have three, you have a bank use with three drive-throughs, and you want to change it to a restaurant use with one drive-through. That's closer conformity to zero, right?
Anything going from where it is, closer to the conformity? We actually have, there's two provisions in code that we look at. Those provisions are, you know, essentially what's in the best interest of the community. And do you recall the other one? Closer conformity to the code. So the way we look at that is, we look at that from a standards standpoint and also from a use standpoint. For instance, a use, a restaurant, a bar, mostly restaurant, that's something that's called out in the California Avenue District. It's called out in the Midtown District as uses that are appropriate in that area. The standards, we know that a lot of the reinvestment properties, they're not up to standard currently, you know, be it landscaping or even some of the sidewalks.
Well, I'm...
So we, so what we do is we try to bring people incrementally closer to conformity with the acknowledgement that if we require, require all the conformity right up front, we may prohibit reinvestment within our urban core areas.
Sounds like you have a lot of discretion to decide who you allow to become closer conformity, what standard. But if we were to narrow this closely to uses, which I think you're using interchangeably with the word impacts. So it's within your ability to decide that the impact slash use of a restaurant with one drive-through, McDonald's with the drive-through, is closer conformity to the Midtown policies and codes than a bank with bank hours and three teller windows and, or drive-up ATM. You're, you're calling that closer conformity, and that gives you, you have the discretion to make that, and the impacts you feel are less.
Through the mayor, we use our discretion every day as your professional planning staff. We make daily decisions to help fulfill our master plan and help fulfill and implement our code. So as the administrator and, and the designees, and we have multiple designees as the administrator, that's how we effectively do our, our job from a day-to-day basis. I heard McDonald's brought up a couple times, and our code doesn't, if a drive-through is there, a fast food restaurant, we don't call out that, say, McDonald's is more appropriate than, you know, a Taco Bell or, you know, we don't distinguish between the types of uses. So, you know, if a drive-through is allowed, you know, we don't distinguish between the different type of uses.
Yeah. I mean, last time I heard, I didn't see any drive-through soup restaurants or Midtown eats. I've seen drive-through, or even, you know, Bevo's, Bevo's not driving drive-throughs, I know Starbucks is. So anyway, I think that, I appreciate the discretion. I understand as well as anyone, the discretion that the staff makes on some of these conditions. But I think in this one, related to uses, that can impact neighborhoods, undermine all the planning work that has been done in so many ways, and have broad implications to intersections we're not even looking at, like California Avenue and Arlington. I think we need to bring... looking at, like California Avenue and Arlington, I think we need to bring it back to this table.
I think our staff is qualified to make those decisions, bring them. I think we're causing people cost and delays in putting in these extra things, and I think you're going to be a hindrance to development.
And you're happy the way they made the decision under this provision to give the community the Wild Orchid sign, too?
No, man, that was years... They went through their appeal process.
That was years before I ever came around, so...
Okay, okay.
No, it was.
I motion...
It's ours. And they followed the appeal process. I mean, it ended up at us.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, so we are...
And every week, people wonder what's going on with the Wild Orchid sign. These are that sort of magnitude that can have that impact in neighborhoods.
Freedom of speech, I think, is what the lawyers told us at one time.
I did make a motion.
Do you got a motion?
I did.
Okay, have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote, four-three and no.
Three-four.
Three-four, no. Yeah. Give me a, yeah, dash for, okay. Public, there is no public comment at six.
I'll bring up something for public comment. While we were... I'll bring up something for public comment. While we were here, we received an email from one of the deputy city attorneys related to the IAFF and kind of some of the issues that we take. Mr. Manager, do you think that we should reconvene into closed session to discuss this with the light of the fact that we're going to be out of session for about a few months?
I think so.
I mean, I'm just raising it, I don't know if you saw your email, Mayor.
I didn't get a copy of any.
No, no, it came to the email.
I have not read the email. I guess I would look to the city attorney's office to advise us if we need to go into a closed session.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We can ask council to go into closed session any time between now and, you know, on any matter, so if you want to do that now, we can arrange it.
I think there's value in actually doing that now.
What? Did you read the email?
I read the beginning of the caption.
Yeah, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's. I would have that discussion in an attorney-client privilege session.
My fear is we're going to go on a bit of a break and get us all back...
That's fine, we'll get it ready for you if you give us 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
Second.